Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for attending the August 25, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. At this time, I will ask the council clerk to read the roll call.
Councilwoman Mellie Garthwaite.
Mellie Garthwaite, Council Large, present.
Councilman Brian Lox.
Brian Lox, Council Large, present.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan, First District, present.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali, Third District, present.
Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, present, District Four.
Councilman Edward McMillan is absent. Councilwoman Dawn Callahan.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan, Sixth District, is present.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker is absent. Councilman Christopher Vargo.
Councilman Christopher Vargo, Eighth District, present.
Councilwoman Katie Muller is absent. Councilman Steve Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, Tenth District, present.
And Chairman Nicholas Pascal is also absent. We do have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Stacy. Before we get started tonight, I would like everybody to observe a moment of silence for Tremont Tucker. Mr. Tucker worked for the Connecticut Department of Transportation, and he was unfortunately killed while on the job on I-95 in Greenwich, and he is the nephew of Councilwoman Kathy Tucker, and that's why she's not here today. She is grieving with her family. So if we could just please bow our heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. On this evening's agenda, the first item was a 650 public hearing for the Finance Committee on Communication J from the July 28, 2025 Agenda, which is from Abdul Qadir, the city engineer, regarding a bond ordinance for some work on Dawson Avenue. We are canceling that public hearing for this evening. There has been a change in the amount that the bond is going to be for, which we will discuss further when we recess into committee meetings. So the time is now 6:58, and the Committee on Legislative Matters will conduct a public hearing. Acting Chairwoman Melton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The time is 6:58, and we will now have the public hearing on Communication I from the July 28 Agenda from Mayor Dorinda Borr regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 97 of the Code of West Haven Fair Rent Commission. Would anyone from the public like to address the City Council on this matter? Please state your name and address.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Stephen Mullins, Chair of the Fair Rent Commission, City of West Haven, 355 Main Street. Any municipality with a population of 25,000 or more in the state of Connecticut, as so determined by the most recent census of the state of the United States Census, is to adopt an ordinance for the creation of a fair rent commission. All such commissions shall take studies and conduct investigations, conduct public hearings, and receive complaints relative to rent charges on housing accommodations except for housing that is deemed to be seasonal. So Mayor Borr has complied with the state statutes and roughly 17 months ago appointed a commission of several individuals in April of 2024 to do just that, to begin hearings and conduct investigations regarding what many of our renting residents consider to be either an unreasonable rent increase and also in that are unreasonable accommodations also. As you see before you, I have presented you all with an application, an example, well, those are actual applications for the residents to use if they would like to file a complaint with the Fair Rent Commission. It's one thing that I realized that you had not seen yet, is the actual formal application. The applications are available in Mayor Borr's office. They're also available in the Corporation Council's office as well as the City Clerk's office. We're not at the point now where we can, we have them online yet. However, I hope that we'll be able to happen in the near future. The commission put together, I, as Chair, put together a subcommittee of commissioners to come up with the ordinance, proposed ordinance that you have before you. And those commissioners were a cross-section of commissioners. They were representative of the landlords, representative of the renters, miscellaneous, and an alternate who was representative of renters. Unlike other commissions, it's not just a representatives of minority party, it's also representatives of people in different living circumstances, and that is how the commission is set up, and that is to ensure the fairness of our deliberations. We have had several cases before us over the last year. It was just, I believe it was August of last year that we began actually hearing cases and organizing, and we've heard several cases, and many of these cases have gone in favor of landlords, and many of these cases have gone in favor of renters. I am available here along with Commissioner Colleen O'Connor, one of your former colleagues, and our legal staff for any questions regarding anything that I may not have answered. But we are here, and I am very interested and eager to hear the comments from members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Would anyone else from the public like to address the City Council on this matter?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Raphael Podolsky. I'm a lawyer with Connecticut Legal Services, which is one of the legal aid programs. I live in Hartford, so I'm not a West Haven person, although I like pizza. I like this part of the state, and I like West Haven. I'm here on behalf of Connecticut Legal Services, also New Haven Legal Assistance, which serves this particular area, and also the Connecticut Fair Housing Center. I put something together in writing, which I think you all have copies of, and I guess what I'd like to do is tell you something about myself, tell you something about our major concerns. We first saw, I first saw this really on Friday, and we have some concerns about some of the changes, and my hope in coming down here today was really to ask that you reconsider some of the things that are in there. So rather than immediately moving this forward, you take, you kind of review it, examine why the concerns are there, and perhaps make some changes as a result. My own involvement goes back years and years. Many years ago, I was on the Hartford Fair Rent Commission, which is where I live. In 2022, when the legislature mandated that larger towns have to have fair rent commissions, I was one of the people who were involved in that, and then two of us, me and an attorney named Sarah White from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, put together a way in which we could do training of new commissioners because, especially for the new towns, they had no idea what a fair rent commission was, and there's just no basis for them to start figuring out what to do. West Haven was a little different because West Haven has an ordinance going back, I think, into the 1980s. But the commission had essentially become non-functional during the early part of the 2000s, and that was a result of there being a much more stable rental market, and I think what happened was the complaints just stopped coming in. So we've done a lot of trainings. I've been involved in trainings for over 20, now for over 20 fair rent commissions during the last three, two and a half, three years, and I think people have found it helpful. We've also put together what we call a toolkit, which is online, and I refer to it in my testimony, a number of commissions have actually, commission members have gone and taken a look at it, and it's there if you wanted to look at it. I come to this from a tenant perspective. I don't want anybody to think anything else, but the very existence of a fair rent commission is designed to be tenant protective. It's like a consumer protection act, because without it, tenants don't really have a remedy. This becomes the available remedy. What I want to do very briefly, because I know my time must be limited, is in the written materials, I did a markup of the proposed changes in the amendment, and I highlighted six concerns that we had, and I want to mention three of them in particular that I think are especially important. The first deal is Section 97-9, which is at the end, and what it does is it omens, it, in trying to spell out what the rules are, it doesn't realize that there are two retaliatory statutes, and it only refers to one of them. The six-month limit, there's a six-month limit on using one particular statute, of which the number is 47A-20, but part of the Fair Rent Commission Act says if you can prove the reason that the landlord is motivated by a desire to retaliate, then there is no time limit. That's very clear in the statutes. That's part of 7-148D, as in David. And I think if you look at those two statutes and read them together, what you realize is, the basic rule is, you can never retaliate because someone has filed a complaint with the commission, but there is a special six-month protection that's not based on motive that kicks in if, once a tenant files a complaint. And so they're two different things. One is based on motive, one is not based on motive, one is time limited, one is not. And Section 97-9 doesn't recognize those distinctions. So that's the first thing. The second thing is Section 97-5.5, which has a number of things in it, but what I think it doesn't realize is the structure that it uses is not a workable structure. It's trying to address the issue of, it's sort of the flip side of retaliation by a landlord, what if a tenant is filing a complaint just to harass the landlord? And it says that complaint can be thrown out. But the problem is, you can't determine someone's motive without a hearing. So where the proposal says they don't have to have a hearing, there is no hearing, you just throw it out, there is no mechanism for throwing it out without a hearing, and probably would be unconstitutional to make a decision that you couldn't file a complaint without giving a hearing. The same as the retaliation rule, for example, is, commission cannot find a landlord retaliating without holding a hearing. Similarly, the commission certainly couldn't find that the tenant is harassing. But the second thing is, is that it become, having it there becomes an invitation for landlords to claim that everything is harassing, and that's not unreasonable, and it's not ridiculous, but it's a problem, and it's something I think you would want to put in your ordinance. The reality is, a landlord who proposes, say, to raise the rent, does not do it because he thinks it's, he or she thinks it's an unreasonable thing to do. Presumably, the landlord finds it reasonable, and it may well be reasonable. In some sense, every complaint comes from the fact that the tenant thinks the landlord is being unreasonable, and the landlord responds by saying no, because they think the tenant is being unreasonable. If you say in the ordinance that you're not going to allow the tenant to be heard unless, and now I'm saying, let's say, assume you were going to have a hearing in order to decide what everybody's real motive was in filing, it will turn out that the tenant is filing because they think the landlord is being unfair. Well, isn't that what the Fair Rent Commission is about? That's the job of the Fair Rent Commission, to hold a hearing and determine whether it's a fair and reasonable rent increase or not. So that in order to decide what people's motive is, you would have to hold the hearing. And what's the hearing going to be about? Whether the tenant's complaint is frivolous or not. Well, if it's frivolous, the tenant simply loses on the complaint. The commission would have just held the hearing. But by putting it into the ordinance, you incentivize people to obstruct essentially the commission's normal process, which would be to hold the hearing. And so I would suggest to you, that's not what you want to do. It's not going to work, and it's going to be counterproductive. It's going to interfere with the normal process that often involves conciliation, very common with fair rent commissions, that before it ever gets to the hearing stage, the existence of a staff person who is talking to both parties ends up working out a compromise. You actually want the complaints to come in, because only a relatively small percentage will ever get to the hearing stage anyway. And the other thing is, even though commissions tend to have landlords and tenants, they tend to vote unanimously. Not always, but unanimously. It's not like they're two different teams fighting each other. There tends to be a consensus as to what is fair and reasonable and what is not fair and reasonable. And so I think that section is going to be very counterproductive if you put it in. It's going to have the practical effect of creating conflict, unnecessary conflict, and interfering with the commission hearing a case. And you cannot dismiss a complaint for, because you think, without a hearing, if you think on a motivational basis. One of the things we suggested is one possible language is, really, the only proper time for dismissal is when there's no jurisdiction to the commission at all, when it's about something the commission has no power to do anything with, then a dismissal might be appropriate. And the existing ordinance already has provisions. For example, there's already a provision in it that says if the tenant damages the property, well, there's a provision in it that says, that adopts the 13 basic standards. One of those 13 standards is, the tenant has damaged the property. So you don't need some special rule in the ordinance that's already incorporated. And finally, the last thing I would say we had particular concern about is in 97-3, which is closer to the front of the amendments. And what that does, and I'm not sure exactly how the ordinance expects this to work, but it basically creates a situation in which a supermajority, not just a majority, but a supermajority, is necessary for the commission to rule in favor of the tenant. And I don't think that's authorized by law, so I don't think it's, I don't actually think that's a legal provision, but it's also very much unfair and contrary to the purpose of having a fair rent commission. It's not authorized by law, because normally governmental decisions are decided by majority vote. There are, there's a statute in the zoning laws, for example, in which the legislature has directed that under certain conditions, a zoning commission requires a two-thirds vote. But that's because the legislature has required it. There's no such requirement in the Fair Rent Commission Act. And the way, what this proposal, what is in the proposed amendment, it says that even though the quorum is four, the tenant cannot win on a complaint unless it gets at least four votes. So if you have seven people, four to three would be a majority vote, and that's fine. But what happens when you have only five people in attendance? Well, that's a quorum. The meeting can go forward. They can make a decision, but now the only decision they can make is a decision against the tenant. And so a four to one, a three to two vote, the tenant will lose instead of winning. If you had only four people showing, the minimum quorum, one person could veto the decision. Three to one, that's a, that would be, the tenant's relief would be denied. It seems to me the way you control the problem, which is, well, what if you have not very many commissioners there, is you control what the quorum is. Whereas if you want to make the quorum five instead of four or six instead of five, my view is, four works as a quorum, but it would not be a big deal if a larger quorum were required, but you still would decide all the cases either direction for either party by majority vote. And that's what we would, that's what we would recommend. In our experience, commissions like to hold the quorum reasonably low, because sometimes it can be very difficult to get enough people there, and if that happens, you can, then you end up having to postpone the meeting, and nobody likes meetings being postponed. Neither the landlord nor the tenant appreciates the commission not making a reasonably quick decision. So there's the argument for a smaller quorum. There's an argument for a larger quorum that says, well, we want to make sure there are at least four people out of seven, so you could make the quorum seven. But that's the, it seems to me that's the way you resolve the issue. I'm happy to talk about anything else that I wrote you about. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have that would be of any help. And I guess the one other thing I would say is, we've tried to be a resource for commissions. Just a couple weeks ago, we trained in Norwalk. We have a training coming up in Nogatuck. We've worked with this statewide association of fair rent commissions that we work with. To the extent that you, or maybe more directly, the commission itself finds it would be usable to work with us, we're more than happy to do that.
Madam Chair, I know that this is a public hearing, and we do not usually engage, but since counsel did, thank you, travel from Hartford, I think that would be appropriate if we opened up to questions from the council and from the mayor of the attorney. That way he can go home after this, if that's okay with you.
I agree.
First of all, thank you very much for coming and making the trip here. I think you have a lot of good valuable input and certainly a lot of experience. Question on the quorum, because you raised an interesting point. So the law requires a certain amount of landlords and renters and then neither, correct?
Your ordinance, actually, the statute does not. The existing ordinance, I think, already does.
Yes. Okay. I'm just trying to think if it was a quorum and it wasn't numbered in favor of the renters, right? So it was a quorum, but there wasn't enough, you try to have an equal amount of renters, landlords, and then those that are neither in order to make it a fair outcome. We're just wondering how that impacts the quorum.
Well, this is my, I'll tell you my understanding. We got to ask questions about this, and I ended up calling the Secretary of the State's office to try and figure this out, because, for example, if a landlord commissioner is not going to be able to come, does the alternate have to be a landlord commissioner, or could the alternate be a homeowner? I mean, do you have, how does that balance play out? My understanding, and I think you probably, there probably may be ways you can address it by ordinance, because the statute does not say, and as I indicated, doesn't even require that you have any landlords or any tenants on the commission, let alone a balance. And there are commissions that have no landlords or tenants as members of the commission, or that it's sort of random based on the appointing authority. So, I mean, all those things are possibilities. What they said to me, and I'm now giving you something secondhand, was that those provisions govern the basic existence of the meeting at all. In other words, if the quorum is four, is four commission members, you can't have a meeting if you don't have four commissioners present. If there are provisions about trying to maintain a balance, you need to comply with what the ordinance says is the balance, but if the ordinance is silent, then it doesn't matter. So for example, if the ordinance says you cannot meet without one landlord and one tenant being present, then the absence, if you couldn't replace them, you couldn't hold the meeting. If the ordinance simply says the commission's membership must include one landlord and one tenant, and let's say the tenant doesn't show up in a meeting, you can go ahead as long as you have a quorum. Whereas the quorum requirement, again, I'm giving you something somebody else has told me, that the way the quorum requirement works is it controls the number of people who have to be there pursuant to the ordinance, but not whether the particular people are there or whether that particular balance exists. And I think that's a practical decision, because unless you have a large number of alternates that can easily fill in, the commission needs to have a way, if you have, I think you have a seven-person commission, that the commission needs to be able to work when people are on vacation or go, or out sick, or just are busy and don't show up. Sometimes you have a member or two members that just lose interest and stop showing up at meetings, that the commission needs to be able to function. And so you just have to be cautious about not being so rigid in the rule that the commission ends up canceling all their meetings. That you absolutely do not want that to happen.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Chairman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counsel, thank you for making the trip. I really appreciate it. This was very helpful. I have two questions about your comments. Going to 97-9 about the time limit, to me, there has to be, I understand the six months for when there's no evidence that it's being done retaliatory, and then when there is evidence or when the tenant does believe there's evidence, there's a longer time span. But to me, saying that a tenant could bring a complaint five or six years down the road, that seems unreasonable. So is there anything that we could do to set a time limit, and if so, what would be reasonable?
Well, my opinion, I don't think, first of all, you're not going to need to set a time limit, because you're not going to get complaints five years down the road. But I will tell you the complaint that you're going to get, because people have come up and talked about it, and it's, to me, it's like an obvious situation. Land, it's very common for fair rent commissions to make their orders last for one year, and that's because they're sort of imposing typically a rent rule on top of an existing lease, and so the leases typically are one year. So one year is very common. There's, the statute doesn't say, you could, the commission could do six months, it could do two years. Sometimes it might do a phase in that's long, but typically it's a year. So the landlord, tenant goes to, files a complaint, landlord disagrees, they have a hearing, commission makes the decision that maybe splits the difference between them, and says it's going to be in effect for a year. The landlord says, okay, you won this one, sort of. You're not coming back here again. When that lease is up, you're out of here. Okay? The lease isn't up for a year. The lease ends, landlord's got 10 other tenants. They all get new leases with rent increases proposed, except our one tenant. The one tenant who filed the complaint, landlord says, I'm not renting to you, and if you don't leave, I'm evicting you based on expiration of your lease. That is a critically important time, and the tenant has to be able to file a complaint of retaliation, because that's obvious retaliation. You could prove it circumstantially by the fact that they're the only tenant that didn't get renewed, but you can prove it, the example I gave you, with actual evidence. The landlord admitted he was going to retaliate. You can't do it. So if you put, so you need at least to go the year, even though the decision has expired, it expired in 12 months. This is now month 13, the landlord's not allowing a rent. That's, you need to be able to deal with that. In reality, once you get past 14 or 15 months, nobody's going to file a retaliation complaint, and certainly not after two years. And so rather than trying to get into, can we, you know, how many months should we go? When should we put the limit? I think what will happen is, if the tenant raises a retaliation claim well beyond the time that it's reasonable, because so many other things have happened, the commission is just going to say, that's not retaliatory. I mean, it's, the tenant's going to have the burden to show that this is retaliation. So I think it's a non-problem. I'm not aware of it ever being a problem. So to me, you just, the statute says you can't retaliate because of the tenant complaint to the commission. I think that holds for as long as the retaliation, as long as the landlord, as long as you can show retaliation.
Thank you.
I think so. Reasonable.
And my second final question is on 97-5.5, the eligibility to file the complaint. I understand exactly what you were saying, that the commission should not be able to summarily dismiss a complaint on its face, and there has to be a finding that the tenant either didn't meet its burden or, you know, it was filed for some improper purpose. Is there a way that we could build something into here that prohibits repeat filers? So if a tenant files a complaint and the ruling's in favor of the landlord, and then a month later, or even six months later, files it again, or is there a way that we could prohibit a repeat serial filing?
I think you can simply administratively prohibit a repeat on the same complaint that's already been decided by the commission, and I don't think you need to put that in the ordinance. But you need to be aware that there are some complaints that may arise that are not repeat complaints. I mean, for example, typically, most complaints come in when there's a rent increase. Under the statute, you don't have, the complaint's actually technically not about a rental increase. It's about an unconscionable rental charge. So there's very explicit in the statute, it's not limited to increases, but in reality, it's typically an increase that triggers the complaint. But the complaint may, to a large extent, be based on maintenance, whereas in effect, the tenant is saying, this rent increase is unreasonable in light of the fact that the landlord doesn't fix anything. And it's not an uncommon decision of the commission to say, landlord will give you all or part of your increase as soon as you fix the things that we have determined from the evidence are problems that ought to be fixed. The, what may happen is, you may have a circumstance where, let's say, the tenant loses, place is fine, but during the course of, say, the next six months, the landlord stops doing maintenance, and now the tenant complains in effect that the rent increase, which you've already determined is acceptable, or maybe you've set an amount that is the acceptable determined is acceptable, or maybe you've set an amount, is the acceptable amount, but that the situation, that the premises have changed. In that case, I think they're entitled to file a complaint. But if their only complaint is, "You made a bad decision four months ago, and you should have decided in my favor and you decided against me," no. The rule is, you can take an appeal. I mean, if you don't like the commission's decision, you have a right under the statute to go to court and appeal. But once that period is gone, then you can't make the same complaint over again. You're going to have to come up with something different. Again, I think it's not going to happen very often, but if it does happen, I think the commission can deal with it. I mean, if they listen to the tenant, and the commission says, "Wait a second. This is, you're not giving us anything new that you didn't give us before," they're going to just rule against the tenant.
Thank you.
And I think that's fine. And it avoids some of these other problems of, do we have to have a special hearing separate just for the purpose of deciding what people's motive is, and whether it's a good motive or a bad motive? If the rent increase is, for example, so large as to be totally harsh and unconscionable for everybody, in the end, the motive may not make any difference as to why somebody has filed a complaint. Or it may. It may. I think, for whatever it's worth, one of the, to me, one, attorney White and I have said at many of our trainings, this is called a fair rent commission. Why? Because the commission is the voice of the conscience of the community. It's why it's good to have diverse group of people on it, who come with different angles and different perspectives. So, it's good to have landlords and homeowners and tenants, because people, they'll all look at it from their own perspective. But the question is, is this rental increase, particularly if it's an increase, so harsh that it really strikes us as unfair? This isn't right? And that's, requires judgment, requires balance, requires flexibility. The statute gives guidance in a lot of different ways, and sort of structures what can be done. But I think it's actually one of the beauties of the commission, that it allows that flexibility and people apply common sense, really.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from counsel?
Thank you for having given me the opportunity to speak. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Podolsky. Thank you very much. Would anyone else from the public like to address the city council on this matter? Please state your name.
My name is Mason Smith, and I'm currently a renter at 156 Bull Hill Lane. And I'm here tonight, first, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak about these proposed amendments, my shared attorney Podolsky's concerns with a few of these. I first want to touch upon some of the importance of the fair rent commission. The fair rent commission is vital. About half of West Haven residents are now renters, perhaps even outnumbering homeowners. And without any state-level rent stabilization, our rents have skyrocketed over the past four years, and frankly, we are suffering. The fair rent commission exists as the only recourse tenants have to make valid and legitimate arguments against an unfair rent increase to allow their continued living and thriving in West Haven. I'm concerned by a number of the proposed amendments. First, Section 97-3, officers' rules for conduct. I guess I'm kind of beating a dead horse here, but this sets a quorum of four out of seven members, which is understandable. However, it further states that a minimum of four affirmative votes are required to find harsh and unconscionable rents or order of reduction. If only a quorum of four is present, the tenant would need to win all four votes and would essentially lose the case given a single no vote. This would essentially transform the fair rent commission from a majority rule body to a minority veto body. I believe this is contrary to the foundation of public operating bodies. Even with five members, 80% of the body must vote in the affirmative, and if six are present, it's still a supermajority at 67%. These are not how public boards are supposed to function. Instead, I would urge the council to change this proposed amendment to include that it shall be a majority vote of the members present in voting, provided a quorum is present. This would follow typical voting procedure and ensures that the fair rent commission can remain a majority rule body. Second, 90, Section 97-4, powers. The proposed amendment adds, "The commission may also dismiss the complaint. Without any further context, explanation, or standards, this amendment on its own presents itself as a blank check to dismiss complaints." This added sentence with no other criteria for when a case shall be dismissed, to me, seems ripe for throwing out cases before there are any considerations as to the facts of the case. The commission already has the power to decline complaints. It doesn't have jurisdiction over, and during a hearing, and always has the option to find in favor of the landlord. I would recommend the council does not pass this proposed amendment, or at least narrows the dismissal, to clear examples only, such as complaints over which the commission does not have jurisdiction. And lastly, the newly created proposed Section 97-5.5, eligibility to file complaint, allows landlords to raise, quote, "affirmative defenses" like rental arrears and tenant-caused damage as criteria. State law lists 13 factors that must all be considered and weighed against each other in the commissioner's analysis. One of these factors is tenant damage, meaning it should be considered during the hearing. It is not authorized to be a knockout factor, preventing a hearing from occurring. Arrears is not one of these 13 factors, and in fact, the toolkit that attorney Podolsky mentioned, Home Connecticut's Fair Rent Commission Toolkit, states that being current on the rent is not a condition of filing a fair rent commission complaint. This proposed amendment also bars hearings on complaints the commission finds are filed to harass, embarrass, or annoy landlords, or to delay or defeat eviction. It is unclear exactly how the commission would legally make this finding without a hearing. Bad faith dismissals are outside of the commission's legal authority. It's not up to the commission to determine the motive behind a tenant filing a complaint, only to hear the merits of the case. The same toolkit that I mentioned before states that a fair rent commission will still have jurisdiction even if a summary process action has been filed. A tenant facing eviction should not be prevented from filing a fair rent commission complaint, and in fact, these tenants may be the most vulnerable and in need of the commission's intervention. I believe this new section is antithetical to the purpose of a fair rent commission enacted by state law and creates new unnecessary barriers for renters looking to contest unfair rent increases. I suggest that the council rejects this new section entirely. I support a strong, efficient, and just fair rent commission. I urge the city council to reconsider these amendments and draft updated language to ensure ongoing fairness to both parties, removing the supermajority requirement in Section 97-3, amending Section 97-4 to limit dismissals, and removing Section 97-5.5 entirely. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to address the city council on this matter? For a second time, would anyone from the public like to address the city council on this matter? For a third and final time, would anyone from the public like to address the city council on this matter? Of course, Madam Anne.
I just, I just want to thank you both for all of your input. As you mentioned, West Haven was a little bit of our time, ahead of our time, when we were one of the first municipalities to create a fair rent commission in the 80s, when a lot of municipalities didn't, because there was vision at that time that it needed to be fair, and kind of went defunct because there wasn't a lot of complaints. And then, fortunately, the legislative body took up the new law. As a result, a lot of that was during COVID, when we saw those astronomical rent hikes. It comes full circle for me, because I was on, you know, I was a state representative at that time, and we heard countless calls from renters that were experiencing a lot of unjust increases. Some increases were justified, some were, you know, astronomical. So, we knew we had to do something. So, I want to thank you for all your input in bringing this across the state and helping everyone to create their commission. And we'll certainly, sounds like we have a little work to do. I won't speak for the council, because they're voting on it, but I take your, it's very valuable input. And I just want to give a shout out to Mason, because Mason was my student at the University of New Haven, and I haven't seen you in a while. So, to see you get up there and stand up for what you believe in, I'm really proud of you. So, thank you both for being here.
No one else coming forth? The public hearing is now closed at 7:34. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay. We will now enter into a regular public session. The time is 7:35. Would anyone from the public like to address the city council? For a second time, would anyone from the public like to address the city council? Mr. Hebert?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Rich Hebert. I live at 166 Bloom Street. I woke up this morning, was pleasantly surprised that someone had come in the middle of the night and put down stripes by the stop signs on Bloom Street. And it's a welcome addition. I would like to commend whoever's responsible for that, and also suggest that those type of stripes be placed on Beach Street by the brick crosswalks, because it'll highlight them. It's really a highlight, it's an additional sensory reminder that that's a stop sign. I think it would help. And I also, you know, just have a question, if someone can get back to me and let me know what the status is of the water pollution stations, you know. I have a main pump station across from my house, and the one that's on Beach Street that we're supposed to be hardened. I don't know what the status is on that. Is that gone completely? And also, the status of the incinerator, are we entertaining fixing that or not? And that's about all I have for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hebert. Would anyone else from the public like to address the city council?
Hi. Bonnie Posick, 107 East Avenue. I attended an informal meeting last Monday with the owners of Riva and some of my neighbors, including Councilwoman Garthwaite and Councilwoman Melton. I have lived in the neighborhood long enough to remember Beach Street when Chicks and Captain's Galley were open, compared to the past decade when there were no businesses on Beach Street at all, compared to now, when activity is on an upswing. I much prefer the improvements that have been made to the area over the past few years, and I think the majority of my neighbors would agree. We really appreciated that the owners of Riva took the time to meet with us and explain the accommodations they have made to their business since they opened a couple of months ago. We appreciate that they have shortened their hours of business and have employed more security guards to help keep our neighborhood safe. Our major complaint was not addressed, though. This establishment borders a residential neighborhood, and the volume on the weekends can be overwhelming. We would very much appreciate a compromise in the sound level. On two visits to Riva, I found it difficult to communicate with my friends at the same table due to the volume of the band. While I understand that bands handle their own sound, I also know that the level of sound can be controlled by the bar owner. I would respectfully suggest that, in the interest of remaining good neighbors, the owners of Riva turn down the volume a bit. Their patrons will still be able to enjoy the entertainment, and the neighbors will be a lot happier. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else from the public like to address the city council? I don't think there is anyone. For a second time, would anyone else from the public like to address the city council? Third and final time, anyone from the public like to address the city council? Seeing none, public session is closed. Time is 7:38. Now, I will ask, entertain a motion to approve the Journal of July 28, 2025?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Any corrections or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions?
Three.
Three abstentions? Donovan?
Nope.
Lox and Garthwaite.
Not Donovan. Melton.
Melton. Oh, Melton. Why are you chiming in?
I pointed.
And Garthwaite.
So, we have nine, only nine people present?
That's 26.
That's only six.
Does not pass. Okay. Okay. So, we'll move that out for next week. Madam Clerk, would you, when you're ready, distribute the communications?
Okay. We have before us Communication A from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment refunds for August 2025, which will be filed with tonight's minutes. Communication B from Paul Dorsey Corporation Council to request that the city council pass a resolution approving sidewalk encroachment that will allow for a handicap accessible ramp to be built at the commercial establishment located at 179 Union Avenue, being assigned to the Public Lands Committee, Chairman Donovan. And we have Communication C from Mayor Dorinda Borr regarding a proposed new ordinance amending the code of the city of West Haven to include Chapter 85, an ordinance concerning the illegal use of motorized recreational vehicles and street takeovers, being assigned to the council as a whole, Acting Chairman Vargo. Communication D from Michael Gormany, Finance Director, regarding an authorization to increase the fiscal year 2025, 2026, paving low SIP allocation as previously adopted by the city council from $100,000 to $441,411.37 for the actual grant received from the state of Connecticut, being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Akbarali. Communication E from Michael Gormany, Finance Director, regarding budget transfer for Allington Fire Department in the amount of $3,532 from the Allington Fire Department contingency fund to the Allington Fire Department's salary count for a contractually mandated merit raise for the fire marshal, beginning in fiscal year 2025, 2026, being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Akbarali. And that concludes our communications for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Terry Dorsey, can you take the podium? I have a procedural question for you.
Sir?
My understanding of Robert's rules is that if there's an abstention, it does not count towards the vote count, and therefore, the voting members, as long as it's a majority of the voting members, the question passes. Am I right?
Is this with respect to the approval of the minutes?
Yes.
I know that abstentions wouldn't count in the vote number, but if you have a quorum without that, then certainly that majority would pass. I do not have an answer for you off the top of my head with respect to tonight's question about approving the minutes. You can, though, table it.
So, the safe thing to do is just to?
Table it to the next meeting until you have, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. We will recess into committee meetings. Time is 7:42. First up is counsel as a whole. Communication C from Mayor Dorinda Borr regarding a proposed new ordinance amending the code of the city of West Haven to include Chapter 85, an ordinance concerning the illegal use of motorized recreational vehicles and street takeovers. Normally, the passage of ordinances first flows through the Legislative Matters Committee, but this is a very important ordinance that affects, clearly affects the entire city, public safety, quality of life. So, Chairman Pascal felt that we should just all discuss it and address it at the same time. Mayor, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. Yep, and I see that. Obviously, we have our legal team, and we also have Chief Perno here as well. In late June, the governor signed into law a new legislation that addresses ATVs, illegal ATVs, and to assist with street takeovers. The chief and I and a team went to New Haven back a while ago, and we were part of a regional discussion, and we supported and advocated for this change. We actually started working on this back, I don't know, maybe back in the fall, but once we learned that they were going to take this law up, we decided to put this on pause and wait until the law passed, in order to make sure we codified whatever the law had into our ordinance. So, we kind of put it on hold until we saw exactly what the language was. We were very pleased with the language. We know that the illegal use of ATVs is a major safety hazard on our road, causing crashes, injuries, property damage also. We see incidents of reckless driving throughout our streets that just creates chaos and is a significant safety risk. Enforcement has been a challenge for our police department and this ordinance, this law, and this ordinance that mirrors this law will give our police more tools to address this issue, which addresses a quality of life issue that all of us have been looking to address. In a nutshell... In a nutshell, it's going to help with destruction of vehicles. It's going to help to increase fines, and it's going to allow us really also to hold spectators in addition to participants accountable. So I thank everybody who worked on this. This was quite an endeavor, in particular, Councilman Vargo. I know that you were leading this on the council side and really put your legalese, if that's what you say, legalese, to use to work with our legal team and also work with Chief Pernell. So I think this is a good ordinance and much needed in the City of West Haven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Jello, can you give us a rundown of what this does?
Sure. So what this proposed ordinance does is it makes certain activities for certain vehicles illegal. It makes it subject to fine. What it does is it attaches kind of everybody who's involved in the street takeover. So as you can imagine, enforcement of these, I'm sure the chief can tell you too, enforcement is difficult because you have different stages of who's operating these vehicles, who's a passenger in a vehicle, who's a just spectator of this. And what this ordinance accomplishes is it kind of gets everybody from someone who is there with the intent to observe or actually observing the street takeover, someone is that, gets that group, unlawful operation of the vehicle, passenger of the vehicle. All of these groups are included in this particular ordinance. What it does is it allows the police department to then fine these people, $1,000 for the first violation, $1,500 for a second violation, and $2,000 for a third and subsequent violations. In addition to that, it also allows the vehicle to be impounded and at the point where it can get towed, and the owner of the vehicle would have to pay for the towing fees, any overdue property taxes that may be owed on the vehicle. Any passenger on the vehicle shall be subject to a fine of $250. So I mean, it really does give some teeth to the police department. It also allows the actual vehicle to be forfeited in some disrecks, even destroyed or sold at auction perhaps.
Thank you. Did you have more?
One more thing is it does also allow, it requires that this ordinance be posted at the vehicle dealers, the people that sell the ATVs. It is posted there that this particular activity is illegal and should not be engaged in because it can result in forfeiture and impound of the vehicle itself.
Thank you. Before I open it up to discussion and questions, I'll have Attorney Dorsey stand up.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a clarifying point to Mike's explanation, which was very thorough. The ordinance, as written though, it really does two things. It outlaw, outlaws. It makes illegal operation of certain types of vehicles regardless of street takeover. Okay? And that's what's defined in the ordinance, I believe, as a motorized recreational vehicle. Okay? And then we carve out some exceptions to that, such as, for example, e-bikes, motorized scooters and skateboards, and electric wheelchairs. We believe that all of these types of vehicles should be regulated as well, but that's for possibly another day, another article to this new chapter in the ordinances. So I want to be crystal clear about that. We're not targeting the use of, you know, e-bikes, that type of thing. It's the vehicles that are made not to be driven on public roads and streets.
Okay. Thank you. Before we open up to discussion, Chief Pernell, would you mind discussing the police department's position on this?
Two attorneys touched on excellent points. What I would like to bring out to the attention is that it allows us, through investigation, to go after the organizer, which is a big, big thing for us to be able to do because when they organize these things, they just, they'll put it out on whatever social media platform that they use. We are getting to a point where we can actually get on those platforms and see what they're doing. A lot of times, they're sent to us by just civilians, and that allows us. But the other point, it puts us on an even playing field with the other communities that have this already in place. It sends a message that this is not going to be allowed. We do not like that. If you have ever witnessed one or been involved in one, it is terrifying. I have seen the looks on passengers and operators of vehicles that are stuck in the middle of this, and the look on their faces is heartbreaking. They don't know what to do, whether you're on 95, 91, or Elm Street. It's just as terrifying. The taking of the vehicles, perfect. That's one less vehicle that we have for them to use. So that's, none of them are usually registered, none of them have any bill of sale. It's going to be very hard for them to prove that that vehicle is theirs. So we'll have a big party and crush them. But it was, it's, as the mayor said, it's been a long time coming. We did wait and see what the government had put in and the legislators put in theirs before we went forward with ours. This mirrors, that gives us that same authority, and we're very happy.
Thank you, Chief. I'd just like to thank everybody involved, especially the mayor and Attorney Jello for putting this together when we spoke. I think you're right, Mayor, it was the fall. This was becoming much more prevalent in the area, especially in New Haven, and we saw some area municipalities create similar ordinances. So I reached out to both the mayor and Attorney Jello. We got the ball rolling, and then the mayor learned that the state legislature was taking this up. So we figured, why duplicate work and possibly have to redo it? Let's wait for the state to give us a roadmap of how to get here. So I think that that makes sense. So just thank you all for putting together a very robust ordinance that hopefully will protect our streets and our residents. I do have a question, possibly for either Attorney Dorsey or Attorney Jello, on the fine for the passenger, and I should have caught this earlier.
Yeah.
What if the passenger is unwilling, or unwitting? What if they are in a vehicle and the driver decides just to do this on their own? Do they have a mechanism to challenge the imposition of a fine on them?
Yeah.
It would just be the appeal?
Yeah. There's an appeal process that is contained within this 85-4.
Okay.
In the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Heverden?
It lists for passengers that are 16. What if they're under 16? Is there any, I mean, do we do anything? Can we do anything?
Yeah, that's a juvenile issue. So it would be dealt with through juvenile court, which is...
It's not a fine?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Callahan?
Good evening. Thank you for bringing this up. I think it's super, super, super important. I unfortunately was in the middle of these just this past week. I left work, and they had us go out the side way, which is by the railroad, and it was dark, and we were at the red light, and a bunch of them pulled up on the left, and they kind of blocked us all in, like you were explaining. And it was very intimidating, and they wanted to go right from the far-left lane, and, you know, we just held back and let them do their thing, but they still were with us and blocked us in. What worried me is, I won't say what city I was in, but it was around here. It wasn't here in West Haven, but there was two cops on each corner who did absolutely nothing about it, and that's what scared me even more. They saw it, they saw it at the first red light. It followed up to the next red light, which was by the highway, and they both sat on both corners. And I just don't know, maybe Chief can answer this, I'm sure we're a little bit more diligent in West Haven, if they just get intimidated, they get scared. I wasn't quite sure, but that's what really brought my belief down in being protected. Like, again, I wasn't in West Haven, but it did just happen this weekend, and I was terrified, and especially to see that none of the police were doing anything about it. And there had to be 15 of them, and it was on every side of us. So, and we have a truck, we have a Ram, so it's not like I have a little Mustang, but that didn't seem to matter. So it was more like a cat and mouse game, and that's what scared me. So I guess it's just more of an informational thing to let people know it's real, it's out there, it does exist, and it is scary, as you presented, and I'm just hoping that, I guess, you know, all of our police force involved doesn't have to deal with that kind of intimidation by these folks because it is quite intimidating to all sides. So I just want to thank you for bringing it forward and, you know, anything we could do to work it out together, but thanks. I just, it was more of an information thing, but thank you for bringing it forward. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, there's a lot of you, so we'll just go in order, starting with Donovan.
Thank you, Chairman. First and foremost, I thank God this went through. Unlike you, I go the other way. I get angry, and then I actually think of Joe. If I do something that I really want to do, bring the Westy out in me, so to speak, let's say, then I'll end up visiting Joe, but not on the good side. So that's not worth it. So the penalties, I wish were harsher, but they are what they are, and I'm okay with that. The question, or it's actually more of a clarification, is when it says on public highways, that includes streets, avenues, roads, sidewalks, courts, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that in case the public reads it and they might think maybe it's just I-95.
Well, this also includes private property too. Yeah. Private property's included in this, so it's kind of all encompassing.
Just wanted to make sure everything, that's all, just clarification thing. But thank you again for putting this together. Good luck, Joe. If, again, you need me, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan, who will be deputized. Councilwoman Melton?
Actually, again, thank you very, I echo everything everyone else has said about how important it is for us to pass this. And I just wanted to follow up on Councilman Donovan's question of clarifying some language in here. I just wanted to make sure what was encompassed. I think the language he used is streets and sidewalks, and I just want to make sure that that encompasses everything, like all of our public, that would be Section 85-2B prohibits operation on streets and sidewalks. And you actually read my mind, so there are other public areas that aren't necessarily streets and sidewalks. You have public, you have this sort of, like our boardwalk, for example, would that be considered a street and a sidewalk? Would a parking lot be a street and a sidewalk?
Or any public property.
Is it ju...
But not limited to schools, playgrounds, parks.
So that...
The intent is to be all encompassing.
So it is all encompassing.
The intent is to be inclusive and ever...
Okay, so you feel comfortable with that. And then the operation on private property unless the property owner has granted permission. I just wonder how that would be enforced. In other words, would you actually enforce operation on private property only if the property owner has contacted you, or would you follow it onto private property?
I think the intent was, you know, some people have larger tracts of land, some people do allow dirt bikes and ATVs. That's what they're meant, is to be kind of off-road vehicles. If a property owner is either operating it on their own property, or they give written permission to somebody to go on their property with those vehicles, well, then that doesn't come within the purview of this ordinance. It's only if other people are going on the property without their permission or without any written permission.
I'm thinking more in line with, let's say, a condominium association with their parking lots, for example. Is that...
Like, to allow ATVs all over a condominium association? I don't think that they typically give authorization for that.
No, they don't, but I'm just asking the question for clarification. I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't give permission, but we may not have, we may be silent in our rules, for example, in terms of what you can have, and I'm just wondering whether it would be enforced.
Yes, silence isn't permission. You'd need active, written permission to be operating it.
You need active, written...
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a certain, you know, obviously, there's a certain activity that they're trying to deal with here, not just leisurely going on in parking some places to create havoc and, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, that, Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Lox is... Nope, you're set. Councilwoman Garthwaite?
Hi, Attorney. I want to say this is great. I'm very excited. I've witnessed this. I think a lot of us have seen this, and I think it's about time that we have this. A couple of little things. I was curious about the fine for the retailers. That is just the...
The fine for the what?
The fine for the retailers.
Okay.
That is only in West Haven, correct?
Yeah, this is just...
Just West Haven.
Yeah, this is limited to the City of West Haven.
I'm thinking in my mind, do we even have retailers in West Haven? Are we just covering our bases?
We're just covering our bases.
Covering our bases.
Trying to be all-inclusive. I think we're also trying to mirror the state statute that was passed.
Does the state have, does the state have that, where they...
I believe it does.
Okay, all right. And then I just, the only other, I think this is great, the only little nitpick is a couple of spelling errors right in the beginning of the...
What?
...ordinance.
Which, where? Where is this spelling?
Right in the beginning. West Haven and recreational, behe.
Where's that located?
First sentence.
Those will be changed.
Thank you.
Three points off, Mike.
The red pen came out.
It's a 97 right now.
Flashback to English now.
Councilman Johnstone?
Are you?
Thank you, Chairman. First, bear with me, everybody, I've got four questions here. Chief, the first one's for you in regards to Councilwoman... My gosh, I'm brain farting here. Miss Dawn to my right, thank you. It's just been a long day. Chief, can you clarify, this does not change the chase law that's in effect, correct? We still cannot chase, the PD cannot chase, correct? It's still the observe, protect, let it go by, but this allows us to just to identify and fine and go after them afterward, correct?
There are guidelines and parameters within the state's pursuit policy, correct?
Okay. So that covers that one. So this doesn't change that, this just allows us to go after them with the identification process?
It allows us to have something at the end of the rainbow, which means that once we get them, we don't just let them go with a, you know, your blue stop sign violation.
Perfect, that's what I need for that. This can go to anybody, probably either Paul or Mike. So regards to minors with a vehicle, not with a takeover, but with an individual e-bike, moped, ATV, does the parent, if that residence is identified, is the parent, is the legal guardian now the one responsible? How would that work?
Well, I think, similar to the previous question about what happens when you're under 16, I think it goes through juvenile court, and I think that obviously the parent or guardian would be involved.
Okay.
Whatever the prosecution or finding of that would be.
Okay. Third one, same for corporate. It's rare, but it does happen. Under the fourth, number four, any self-propelled snow plow, snow blower, or lawnmower when used for the purpose of which it was designed and operate at a speed not to exceed four miles per hour. What about companies that on occasion use ATVs with an attached plow or snow brush for their work?
That shouldn't, doesn't really come under this activity. So we're looking for street takeovers.
Even, okay, so even...
I mean, if you're actively just plowing in a commercial manner, you're not creating problems with people.
Perfect, just getting clarification on that. And lastly, this goes for any of the three. Can you just walk us through, just for clarity, walk us through an incident of the process from beginning to end? Because I think that would just kind of help paint the final picture of this whole ordinance. So for example, I know Chief was talking about the video, the recognition, we have an incident, and then it goes to identifying, how long does that process usually take from start to finish?
Video and identification, there's no set time. It could be minutes to months before you get the actual identity of the operator.
And then once it gets identified, then what? It's just on the legal system of just however that fine goes? just on the legal system, of just however that fine goes through, whether there's an appeal?
We will confer with our legal panel and see whether we're going to go for a warrant or just issue the city ordinance on spot.
Perfect, that's what I was looking for. Thank you Chief, thank you gentlemen, thank you Chairman, I'm all set.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other questions? Councilwoman Callahan?
Just a quick one, and I know you said it goes about, uh, street takeovers. What about, um, in our local neighborhoods, just the kids that have a dirt bike and they're going around the neighborhood, having fun with their buddy? I mean, that's not really what we're going after, but how do you feel about that, or should we even take notice of that?
Well, I mean, that, that's if somebody calls and files a complaint with the police department. I'm sure the police department will respond, but I think it has to be, you know, is it a registered vehicle, number one? If it's not registered, not insured, it doesn't belong on the public roads anyway.
Right. I know, I see a lot of it, but I don't know if everybody else does in their districts, but I see quite a bit of it.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to call.
I mean, no harm, it's just the kids, you know, they're going around the neighborhood, but still, I guess you have to follow suit for all.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I, I think that the, the, the real intent is to protect our streets from the, the takeovers from the large groups of these, these operators. However, there are situations that it may not need to be tens or hundreds to, to create a hazard or a nuisance. And chime in if, if I'm going off a field here, Attorney Jello, but, deer headlights.
Good.
But there are, there are certain neighborhoods that you could have, you could have a group of kids, you know, four or five of them, you know, that are still creating a, you know, a nuisance or havoc. But what I did want to bring up is just the, the expressed exclusion of e-bikes and scooters. You and I, Attorney Dorsey, had some exchange on this. I, I am in concept in favor of regulating, but not prohibiting, because in my opinion, especially scooters have almost effectively replaced bicycles
Yes.
for adolescents and, and teenagers, and I did not want us to do anything that just summarily made them stay around the house because they can't, they can't get anywhere. So I thought that that would, we should take our time and figure out how to appropriately address any issues that may, we, we may run into with those types of, piece of equipment. This is really designed to prohibit, you know, takeovers and, and acts of aggression and, and things like that.
Yes, and certain, and the operation of certain vehicles regardless of takeover. What's coming next would be the regulation of the e-bikes, the scooters, the skateboards, motorized skateboards, okay? We address this ordinance that, as you all know, came from the recent state statute, allows us to find people who drive vehicles that are not meant to be driven, are not registered to be driven on our streets, okay? Number one. Number two, there's added fines if you're involved in a street takeover, regardless of vehicle. All right, so that's two different things. Now, regulating e-bikes is going to come next, maybe in the same chapter that we created. That's, okay, don't ride your motorized skateboard faster than a certain mile an hour. Don't ride it on the steps of the city hall, that kind of thing, okay? Some of these e-bikes go seventy miles an hour. I think we should, we, yes, yes, motorized bicycle, bicycles, electric bicycles that could go seventy miles an hour. Seventy miles an hour, it's true, okay? So they have to be regulated. Google it, yes, I, hey, I will tell you right away, okay? So, yeah.
We're fact checking now.
But, but they're made to be ridden, ridden on public streets, and there's state statutes that say whether they have to be registered and et cetera. But we can regulate them as well, just not now under this ordinance, which is before you tonight, for first reading. This addresses those vehicles that were not meant to be driven on city streets, and also takeovers.
Thank you. Councilwoman Milton?
I wasn't going to comment on e-bikes or e-scooters, but since they were brought up, I just wanted to echo my very strong belief that we need to get that regulation put in place, and we, we have experienced some very heavy traffic, for example, along the boardwalk and sidewalks here, and we have had, when you talk about being terrorized, we have residents where I live who are terrorized just walking onto the boardwalk because these things come down at seventy miles an hour, or even less, you know, you know, it, it's still, if you're not aware, you know, there was recently an article in one of our local independent papers where a personal injury lawyer was quoted as saying, "This is making my business very good right now." And so I really do hope that we can come to some meeting of the minds on how to regulate it and, and put public safety at the top. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chief, this is for you about like mopeds, you know, when we're driving down the street and all of a sudden, like a moped or one of these other, they're by themselves, but you know, they, they get in front of you, but they act like they have a license and, you know, a plate, and they don't. I mean, but they take over the road, and you know, you can't get around them, and it's just, that's illegal, right?
The moped itself is not illegal. They are judged by the size of the engine as to whether or not they have to be registered. However, even if to drive a moped, you need an operator's license.
And a plate.
Vehicle itself, no. The vehicle itself does not have to be registered, but to operate it, you need a motor vehicle license, an operator's license.
So they can drive it like a car in the street?
Yes, they're supposed to be all of the rules and regulations of the road.
Okay, so the mopeds are okay then?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. All right, well, that answers that question, thanks.
Doesn't mean they act properly, but...
True, yeah. And again, to reiterate with what Councilwoman Milton said too, we have a young girl that's going to college, and now she's not going this week because she got hit by a e-bike and broke two of the, the, she's in the hospital. Yeah, so, I mean, it's just, it is a thing, so, anyway. But thanks for your help with this. And thanks, I wish that the mopeds...
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Okay, I've just kind of beaten dead horse here a little bit, but you had said that e-bikes, bikes are carved out, but I do want to assure you, we are going to be looking at, an ordinance is just, this one's, ATVs are cut and dry. E-bikes are a little tricky, and we got to find a balance, because we have, I could think of some veterans from your area who have the motor and, you know, go about ten miles an hour on the boardwalk, and then we have some that, so we got to find that balance so that those that do need assistance can use it, but we don't allow havoc. So that is to come next.
Thank you Mayor. Okay, since we are not a committee that reports out, I will do, conduct the first read of the summary of an ordinance amending the code of the city of West Haven to include chapter eighty-five, illegal use of motorized recreational vehicles and street takeovers. Chapter eighty-five of the code of the city of West Haven will make it unlawful to, one, organize, participate in, or gather with the intent to observe the taking over of a portion of a public highway or parking lot, or parking area by blocking or impeding the regular flow of traffic with intent to cause disorder or create a nuisance for other users of such highway or parking area; and, two, operate a quote, "motorized recreational vehicle," defined to include all-terrain vehicles, dirt bikes, mini-cycles, motor-driven cycles, and snowmobiles on any street or sidewalk in the city of West Haven, or on any public property, including but not limited to school property, playgrounds, and parks within the city of West Haven. Violators of section one shall be fined one thousand dollars for a first offense, fifteen hundred dollars for a second offense, and two thousand dollars for each subsequent offense. Violators of section two shall be fined one thousand dollars for a first offense, fifteen hundred dollars for a second offense, and two thousand dollars for each subsequent offense, and shall have such vehicle impounded until any fine, towing costs, and storage costs are paid. And Madam Clerk, I'd like to set this down for a public hearing at our next meeting.
That would be September the eighth. Do you want to do six fifty-five?
I, uh, we'll do six fifty-five. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up is the Finance Committee Chairwoman Acbarali.
Thank you Chairman. The time is now eight fifteen, and your Committee on Finance is now in session. Members present are Councilman Vargo, Chairman Vargo, Councilman Lox, Councilman Johnstone, and myself, Councilwoman Acbarali as Chair. First order of business, we have our finance updates. I'm Michael Gorman.
All right. Good evening, Chairwoman. How are you? Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm going to really give two updates, or I'm gonna give an update and then transition into another update. The first finance update that I have for you is just, you know, by charter, we have to submit the monthly report. So we did, I, my office did finish, and we emailed over the, the weekend, the PDF of the July monthly report, just to kind of give a summary. That's the first report of the fiscal year. So as the cover page mentioned on the monthly report, usually in July, we're really just getting started with the fiscal year, so that's when a lot of departments are going through contractual obligations, setting up POs, and other areas that begin the fiscal year. So there's not really much of a trend or anything. We really start to gauge where we're at, really, after the first quarter of the fiscal year in September. That's really where we start to look at, what's the trend that we see in revenues and expenses from a city standpoint. So really, the July and August monthly reports are just so you can kind of see where we're going from setting up contractual obligations, or where payroll may be trending, but that's really what I have for that first monthly report. Again, later on in the fiscal year, in the next couple of months, we can start to kind of dig into some of these trends within the finance department. So happy to answer any questions on the July report.
Is anyone on the committee on any questions? Looks like we're all set.
All right, perfect.
Thank you so much.
So the second update is, we're closing the fiscal year for fiscal year twenty-five. We hope to have transfers and everything in for the September meeting. We've been working with department heads to see where we're ending in twenty-five. You know, we're looking at, excuse me, the surplus, to see if there's, what the surplus would be. You know, the Board of Education is also finishing up on their side as well. So within fiscal year twenty-five, we're looking at different expenditures and revenues that have completed. So for example, taxes go through, actually go through August. So because there's a portion that's called sixty days, that we have a chance to book back to the previous fiscal year. So once we hit the end of August, which is this week, you know, we really start to gear up in September. So we're hoping for that last meeting in September to submit to the city council the transfers and, you know, gauge where the year is ending, even though it's a pre-audit, because we are in our audit period as well. Now, part of fiscal year twenty-five, you know, is looking at the fund balance and anything that needs to be reserved against the fund balance, or how much the fund balance is going to grow. So for one area, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor to talk about.
My not-so-great news? So we've been reporting on the projection for the finances, but, you know, we've been in pretty good shape, but unfortunately, we, we received a letter from the IRS that in two thousand eighteen, our payroll taxes were not filed properly or on time. One of the last quarters, which has caused a seven hundred thousand dollar hit to our finances. Just, you know, it's just really frustrating, frustrating for Michael, frustrating obviously for me, frustrating for taxpayers. But, you know, we spend all of our days looking for money and how to save and how to drive revenue. And as much as there was challenges in the past, we, we don't focus on them. We always try to look forward. We don't, we just fix, you know, but sometimes you get, you know, some things from the past that kind of hit you, you know, slap you in the face when you're working so hard. So I was really disappointed to receive that letter. We also have a lawsuit that we had to put reserves aside for. We're not going to talk about that lawsuit here, because if we talk about the amount in the lawsuit, then we're going to tip our hand. Paul is working very hard on resolving that. But I bring both of these issues to your attention because we have to put reserves aside. I've hired a lawyer for the IRS, because I think, I think I could put together a pretty good case about, you know, the challenges the city was under, and what was going on, and, you know, some of those are fees because we never paid, you know, when they told us that we did it wrong, we never paid, we never paid what we owed. So I, I think we have a pretty good case, and I hope to cut that down. The IRS was about seven hundred thousand, and then the other case, we're putting aside about five hundred thousand, so. More to come, but I just like to manage expectations, you know, because we're on a good course. We're still going to end with a surplus, but it's just not going to be exactly as much as we had anticipated. But we're going to work through it. We're going to be fine. But I can't not share. That's my report.
Thank you Mayor Bor.
Yep, so, again, as the mayor just mentioned, so we're working hard to just, you know, on the city side, just look at the surplus, account for these two items, and, you know, we believe we'll still end in a positive note, even with reserving these two items for fiscal year twenty-five, just as the mayor mentioned, not as much as we hoped a couple of months ago when we were talking about this, so.
Any comments or questions? Councilman Lox?
I mean, from my experience then with the IRS, they will allow you payment, pay down over time. So it's not like the city will have to say, well, we owe seven hundred thousand dollars and you have to pay it thirty days. So it's, although it's a hit, I'm sure you can work a plan over time, so. I don't see it as a big deal. Honestly, it happens, but the recovery won't be, no, I mean, it happens, but...
No, we're going to work on it.
You recover, and it, I don't know, it's, you know, as a taxpayer, I mean, I'm sad it happened, but...
I think we have a...
You'll have a plan.
We have a, Attorney Dorsey and I met with the lawyer, outlined the case as the mayor mentioned. We think we have a good case, as the mayor said. We are being cautious in reserving the whole amount, but we're hoping that, again, you know, even if we have to pay something, the IRS will knock it down, you know, some, some form or another. But, you know, just to be cautious, we want to reserve the whole amount that we have to date.
I, I, I'm sorry, I just, um, but I agree. So one of our strategies is to ask, you know, if we could have a good portion of it forgiven, and if we could go on a payment plan, a ten-year payment plan, and...
And zero percent interest.
And so, right, you never make the shots you don't go for, so, uh, yes, for the stars. So that's our plan. So yes, good point.
Councilman Vargo?
Thank you. I, I just want to remind the public and the council that this is the whole reason why we have contingencies in our budgets. And I want to applaud the mayor and your staff, that you built in very sizable contingencies, just because we don't know what's coming down. And I want to applaud the council that we, we made sure that those were funded. And this is exactly why stuff happens. We can't, we can't forecast every expense. We can't predict what the future's going to bring. So even, God forbid, we do have to pay the full seven hundred plus, even God forbid, we have to cut a check. We have contingencies in, in place to cover this, so it's, it's not going to be a, you know, a huge detriment to the taxpayer's money that, that we already have accumulated. So I just want to remind everybody of that. Thank you.
I'd like to open this up to the entire committee. Councilman Donovan? I'm sorry, to the, yes. Thank you.
Ike, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well. Quarterly, people are paying quarterly. I know we really didn't get to the second quarter yet, but we're coming up on that. How is that going for part one of the question? Does it seem to be working? People are liking it?
So, I mean, we've heard folks liking that they can pay quarterly. So, I mean, we've heard folks liking that they can pay quarterly, but we're really assessing now, because I think you're gonna gauge really after September and into October, when the first quarter payments are due and second quarter payments are due, because remember, the delinquencies, everything has changed with quarterly payments. And, um, and, you know, we can really gauge the numbers too, because people, you know, still had the opportunity to pay in two halves if they wanted as well. That was their choice. So, I think, once we get past this first quarter and into the second quarter, we can kind of look at the numbers as far as how many really paid quarterly, how many stuck to that half, you know, things like that.
All right, and the, the second part, again, I don't know if it really came into effect yet, but how, how is that going to affect Center Fire and Shore Fire?
No, that's a great question. Um, we just met with them, um, myself, the Assistant Finance Director, the Chief of Staff, and then the chiefs with the districts, because that's obviously a concern, um, that we want to look at, if there's any type of cash flow issues. So, we actually made a plan to meet, um, again, in two to three weeks to kind of look at cash flow analysis and things like that. Because, again, obviously, we can't have the other districts, you know, have a cash flow issue, but we also got to make sure it doesn't create any cash flow issues for ourselves as well. So, we have committed to a plan, the two districts, Allentown is with the city. So, us just working together to ensure that, you know, everything gets processed on, in a timely manner. So, you know, we're working with them.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Vargo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Michael, on the, the issue of the quarterly payments, I know, um, from just re- looking at your prior reports, the contractual obligations that the city has is oftentimes front-loaded in the budget, meaning that they become due and payable, uh, within the first quarter or the first, you know, half. How are we looking, um, from a cash flow perspective, since you have, you know, around 50% of what you would normally have around this time?
Well, I think, um, you know, we've, we've done a good job of managing our cash reserves and the cash on hand with the city, and then again, working with the districts. So, so far, we haven't really seen, um, any issues that have, um, warranted any concern. Um, we've been able to make our debt payments, like those are structured. Obviously, we meet payroll and everything else. Um, so, again, I think with this being the first year of quarterly payments, we're really assessing how we're moving forward, um, if this was to continue, because remember, again, it was in this budget cycle. So, um, so, we haven't experienced anything that warrants any concern at the moment. Um, you know, we've been able to meet all our obligations, and I think that's where these meetings that we have with the districts and ourselves. And to be quite honest, David Taylor, he looks at cash every day. Um, I see his spreadsheet, he looks at it every day, looks at balances, does analysis, you know. So, I think, right now, there's really no concern.
No, no huge red flags that you see right now. That's what I wanted to hear, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Gorman? Yep. Councilwoman Heflin?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So, have you found it, had, everyone's been happy with the way it's been working? Is it harder with the software for payments and quarterly or?
No, um, and no, I think, um, again, um, the folks that, at least I've engaged with, um, and the tax collector has told me, you know, that there has been folks who have been happy about, because it frees up, you know, some of their cash flow and they can make, um, payments on their bills easier. Um, as far as the software goes, there's other municipalities in Connecticut that do quarterly payments. And remember QDS, which is our tax software, they do more than just Connecticut. So, they ha- they already had the capability of doing quarterly payments, um, for us. So, there was no software or other issues that we've experienced, um, with rolling this out. It was really the programming piece in the beginning, but we had no issues with that.
I mean, I found it very easy, I, like.
On the tax bill.
Yeah, exactly. You know, pay that 100%, I'll pay that. You know, like, I, I paid my, my sewer fee, which I thought maybe I would forget, and the next one's the whole thing, it was like, but I was wondering, is that gonna cause trouble for my next one or my next payment? I'm, this is my personal, sorry, but, you know, I'm ter- I wonder if anybody else did that, you know?
And again, that's where, that's where the analysis comes in. That's why it's hard to answer these questions kind of in the beginning, because, again, going to quarterly is people remembering that there's another payment due in October, things like that, that's what we have to assess. You know, how that worked out, and people remembering like, hey, I'm used to paying in a half, but now I gotta pay quarterly, things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions? Mayor Borer, did you have anything?
Yeah, um, I just, a couple of points on the fire districts. I just want to let everyone know that we, we did those analysis before we moved forward with the recommendation of the four payments. Um, so, we, because remember, we have to work, you know, hand-in-hand with the bills, with the fire departments, and that originally was a concern of the fire commissioners, you know, how's this gonna work? And we committed to making sure that, um, we will cover, you know, temporarily, any shortfall, just because they're smaller, so they're tighter. That's why, you know, we have more funding, because we're bigger, obviously. But we don't see any red flags in the districts or on our end. Um, and also, with respect to the four quarterly payments, we're gonna be able to report at the next council meeting, but I think you're gonna see a significant number of residents took advantage of this. That's what the numbers are looking at. But as Michael said, you know, we just want to make sure we have Rachel downstairs in the tax office crunching it, and we'll be able to report all those statistics at the next meeting. The biggest challenge, I think, was with the mortgage companies, right? Um, and while there are other cities that do this, there's only four other cities that do this. So, when we originally looked at it, we reached out to those cities to say, how does it work? Rachel, um, our tax, um, manager downstairs has a network and, you know, gave them a call, and they talked about all the obstacles and the hurdles up front. So, we tried to anticipate them. So, tax office did a very good job during this revow. Um, and the finance, a lot of behind-the-scenes crunching. So, I thank Michael and our tax office for the work they did.
Thank you, Mayor Borer. Councilwoman Callahan?
Um, I don't know if I'm getting ahead, so I, I'm not sure. Um, but does this have anything to do with the paving, the extra money for paving?
No, it does not.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, up, up next, we have Communication D. from Michael Gorman, Finance Director, regarding an authorization to increase the fiscal year 2025 to 2026, paving LoSIP allocation as previously adopted by the City Council from $100,000 to $441,411.37 per the actual grant received from the state of Connecticut. I'd like to open this up favorably. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Mr. Gorman?
All right, um, so, this one is the paving one. Um, so, to keep this, this, this one is, um, has to do with a budgetary, um, increase. So, as you know, the city of West Haven's budget is due by the first Thursday in May, which is well before the state of Connecticut's budget itself. So, sometimes, you know, we may have these numbers or anything else that don't, um, correlate exactly, because at that point, when we're passing our budget, it's really in draft form by the legislature at the state. The reason we're coming to you for this is because this one was a significant change, um, within the allocation that we received. So, we receive LoSIP funds, and within the Capital Improvement Plan, we generally allocate different projects to, um, LoSIP. So, when you look at the book, you see bonding, LoSIP, things like that. Um, we actually received 341,000 more than anticipated, um, from the state of Connecticut. Now, we did have some preliminary numbers, but as you know, we really can't rely on that until the state officially passes its budget. Um, so, what we're asking to do is really increase one of the budgetary line items for paving, um, by the additional funds that we received. Um, and moving forward in the Capital Improvement Plan, you know, um, there seems to be an increase in LoSIP. So, you know, moving forward in future budgets, we can probably allocate these funds, um, a little more, um, going forward. But, in this fiscal year, we did receive additional funds in a grant, so we are asking to increase the Capital Improvement Plan, primarily the, um, I think it's called road patch and slash paving is the official name, um, in the budget. That's, uh, what we're asking.
I think it's a great idea, it makes sense. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? I'd like to open this up to the entire council. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Gorman? Seeing there are no more questions, all those approved?
Aye.
Did you have a question? Mayor Borer? Did you have any? No, that's okay. I, um, yes. Did you, did you, absolutely.
It's supposed to be one of those nights. Um, I just wanted to, uh, mention something related to what Michael's talking about, about the timing of the state budget. There is a state statute that allows us, could allow us to change the timing of the passage of our budget. So, most municipalities, the timing of the passage of the budget is dictated in the charter. Well, all municipalities. Um, and you have to stick with that. And what happens is, our budget process is earlier in the year, and then we get our state numbers at the end of the year, and it's been a guessing game. Uh, every year, it's a guessing game. You don't know what you're getting for education, or special education, or town road aid, or, um, you know, it's a challenge, uh, and we have no opportunity to go back and adjust our budget, um, with significant numbers. So, there is a state statute that Paul and I have been working on that can supersede the charter to allow you to pass an ordinance to potentially change the timing of your budget. So, just giving you a heads up, that is something that we're exploring. Um, so, maybe, we don't know, but maybe we could change the timing of our budget process for next, uh, year. So, I mean, 300,000 is minor compared to some of the bigger adjustments that we've had to make. So, we're working on that. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor Borer. Councilwoman Callahan?
Um, thank you for that explanation, much appreciated. I don't know if, and this is for Mayor Borer, I don't know if you can answer this, um, but I myself have been bombarded with the same question. Um, now that we have a little bit more funds, is it, it's distributed evenly, I would assume, through each district? And I don't know if you could answer, and I know every road is a different length and, um, shape, but so many people ask, you know, when's my road, when's my road, when's my road? Um, I try to explain to people how you've explained to, to us, or, and I've learned through the process that, um, it's distributed fairly, and each district is, is given, um, you know, whatever the budget allocates for how many roads goes to each district. So, with this little bit of increase, is there any kind of, um, way to know one or two roads per district? I'm not even really quite sure of the cost of, the actual whole cost of paving a road. So, or maybe just, you can maybe elaborate on, um, the best way to answer that question going forward? I know it's a tough one, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's not tough at all. I love paving. It's my favorite thing to do as mayor, it literally is. Um, because I know that I could work on projects, I could go to the Capitol, we could get out of state oversight, and you know what people care about? Pave my road, I understand that. Um, so, I look for money often. Um, and just as a reminder, we have about 360 streets in the city of West Haven, and it cost about $2 million for 10 streets. So, you could imagine, we don't have that money. Um, but, we have a lot of catching up to do. So, we are up to about $7 million that we have found in funding for paving, and that's why you see all that paving happening right now. We're finding funding from 2023 that wasn't spent on town road aid, and 2022, that wasn't, wasn't used for, um, capital investments in the road. And we're just finding little pockets and adding them all up. We've even been able to use a little CDBG money. So, um, we have a very elaborate spreadsheet, and Michael and I meet, like, every two weeks, um, and we try to rearrange and figure out how we could put fun- funding towards paving, and we're doing a really good job. So, we're up to about $7 million, where normally, uh, you spend about 1.5. So, we, we're up to about 46 streets, which is collectively more streets than we've paved in the last six years altogether. Um, so, we're working on it, can't hit every street. So, we're taking a look, you know, first of all, yes, a fair allocation of the districts, absolutely. I know those districts like the back of my hand. I know the first from the eighth, from the 10th to, uh, and have walked a lot of those streets. Um, but same with sidewalks. So, we work really hard to make it a even distribution. Actually, when we come upon funding, I have a chart that shows me what districts. Um, and we just use, you know, some people come to us with a little crack in the road, and the road was just paved eight years ago. You know, we have roads that have, haven't been paved in 30 years that are crumbled. Um, so, we have to use our judgment, and I'm very thankful that Phil Sissick, we finally have a Public Works Director. Um, you know, we, uh, and I appreciate everybody who stepped up while we didn't have a Public Works Director. We had Rob, you know, in the acting position, and, you know, we had a lot of people working hard, but, um, Phil brings, you know, uh, a lot more experience as to how we could do things, even the patching. So, we were patching roads and potholes with the cold patch, right? So, you drive over it and all the little crumbly things come out of it, right? Now, we got a hot patch machine, woo-hoo! So, now we patch it, and it stays there. You know, it's the little things in life. Um, so, yes, we worked in, uh, equally distribute, and yes, we work to find funding, and yes, I do ride around and I look at roads, it makes me feel good. Um, it really does, I take my tea in the morning and I drive around, and I'm like, ooh, that came good, ooh, that came good. Um, but to answer the lining, and it actually, um, addresses riches also, we worked hard to tighten up the time between the milling and the paving and the lining. There are three different contractors, and there are very few of those contractors, especially the street lining, that, like, we, I was stressing to get those streets lined before school starts. South Street, Morgan, David, all those streets that have schools on them. Um, you know, it was nerve-wracking, they just got them done this weekend in time for school. So, we're doing the best we can to coordinate that, so those lines you're seeing is, is a catch-up. So, does that help?
It sure does, and I, and I hope that everyone out there in TV land is listening. Um, and I had a quick question, though, I noticed, is there any of the main thoroughfares in our city? Are those state roads that are milled right now? Because I did notice a couple of, uh, major arteries that are, that are milled, and I wasn't sure if that was us or that state.
Um, that, uh, well, are you talking about First Avenue? There's not, yeah, First Avenue, there's not too.
No, there's a couple, there's a couple.
There's not too many. Um, and the state, um, in the beginning year comes out with their list of what they're paving, and not too many.
Right, oh, but the state does give us maybe.
They give us a list ahead of time, because we have to coordinate with them, we have to know. Um, and I do want to answer a question, because I know that there was, um, you know, somebody, uh, tagged me in a post, and I will say, like, I can't manage a city by post, social media tags. I mean, if somebody has something, they should email me, because I'm on that email 24/7, and I'm very good about emailing very promptly. But I, I'm just not on Facebook all day long, so when I get a chance, I look at it and I see things. Um, and there was a question about coordinating with the gas company. We coordinate with the gas company, the gas company needs to take a permit when they're going to do work on a road. Um, we had no permit for that particular road that, you know, was highlighted. Why are we digging up this road when we just paved it? We didn't have a permit for it, so we didn't know the gas company was going to dig it up, and they are not digging it up now. Um, they're going to do some sort of workaround. Um, but, the good thing that came out of that conversation is the gas company, um, they have a lot of streets planned. Um, it's actually in, in, uh, your district that the gas company is going to be putting a lot, a lot of gas in. And we asked them, and we're gonna find out this week, if we could coordinate with them, because, um, typically, they tell us, you know, they take a permit, we know what they're going to do in the gas, then we go in and we pave, they pave half a road. So, we said, give us a price, um, and it makes sense for us to do this paving together. I don't know if they will allow that, we are working with our liaison, um, at the gas company, but why pave half, and then we come in and we pave the whole thing, or we pave half? So, um, we might be able to get, you know, double the bang for our buck if we could do that. And it'll be the first time West Haven's doing that, so.
I noticed that, thank you, that answers a lot, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Hefner, did you have a question? Sorry, thank you. Is there one district that has predominantly more state roads than another? Do you know off the top of your head?
It's some of our main thoroughfares, right? Like, we have Jones Hill Road, we'll have some, we'll have some of First Avenue. You know, certainly Boston Post Road has some. Yeah, it's the main thoroughfares.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions? Seeing there are no more questions, all those approved.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Gorman. I really appreciate it. All right, up next, we have Communication E. from Michael Gorman, Finance Director regarding budget transfer for Allentown Fire Department, AFD, in the amount of three thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars, from the AFD contingency account to the AFD salary account for a contractually mandated merit raise for the fire marshal beginning fiscal year 2025 to 2026. I'd like to bring this up favorably, please. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gorman?
Sure. So this was really a scribbler's error as we were looking in the budget and doing the budget going forward for AFD. There are certain positions within the AFD department that are basically employment contracts, so like appointed officials, the chief, the fire marshal, the assistant, things like that. Within one of these contracts, there was this amount of three thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars that should have been added to the salary account, but it was accidentally omitted from there. So what we're proposing is just to technically make sure that we have the right amount budgeted for salaries and things like that, especially moving forward as we do future budgets. We are looking to transfer the funds from contingency to the salary account. Again, within AFD, Sewer, and the city, we do budget contingency for any things such as this that may arise during the year. So, so again, we're just looking to do a budget transfer as this contract is being finalized, and, and we have the proper amount allocated to salaries.
Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? I'd like to open this up to the entire council. Anyone on the council have any questions? Councilwoman Callahan?
Thank you. I have a question on this one. Is this because, was it simple just error, or was it because they have that new position with the second, the second deputy chief, or the other one, the other position that opened up? Is that why this is getting?
No, this was, this, this was something that I think was being done as we were doing the AFD budget, and unfortunately, between my office and the fire chief, as we were crunching the numbers for their budget and looking at all the salaries and everything else, this number some re, for some reason, wasn't accounted for.
Okay, so it wasn't because of the other position? Okay.
Yeah, no, this is, in talking to the fire chief, just a salary type of numbers error here, as they're going through the employment contracts and things like that.
All right, perfect. Thank you. All set. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions? Seeing there are no more questions, all those approved.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Gorman. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
You as well. All right.
Madam Chairwoman, I apologize, I'm going to have to interrupt you. Our incredibly astute and knowledgeable city council clerk pointed out that because we have to amend this communication, I'm going to ask you to recess your committee at this time. Please.
All right, the time is now eight forty-nine, and your Committee on Finance is now closed.
Recession.
Oh, recess, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. We are reconvening council as a whole. This time, I would like to, I'm going to ask for a motion to amend Communication J. from July twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five agenda, to read from Abdul Qadir, City Engineer, regarding a bond ordinance for the planning, design, and construction of the Dawson Avenue Pump Station and East Avenue Pump Station in the amount of thirty-two million nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Thank you. May I have a second? Second? Thank you. Any discussion? This is so that we can proceed in normal due course, but our, our minutes need to reflect then. She'll have my head if I don't do this.
I appreciate that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The amend, the agenda is so amended, and I will hand it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The time is now eight fifty-one, and we are coming out of recess from my committee. All right, so Communication J. from the July twenty-eighth agenda, from Abdul Qadir, City Engineer, regarding a bond ordinance for the planning, design, and construction of Dawson Avenue Pump Station and East Avenue Pump Station in the amount of thirty-two million nine hundred thousand dollars. I'd like to open this up favorably. Motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dorsey? Thank you.
So as you all know, this was scheduled for a public hearing tonight and a second read, when the original amount was, I believe, twenty-eight million eight hundred doll, eight hundred thousand dollars. The actual amount of the bid now for the work is approximately thirty-two million nine hundred thousand dollars. The best way to describe what happened was maybe the ordinance was premature, because when I received it from Abdul and Bond Counsel, they had a, a bid from the contractor at a certain amount that wasn't a final bid, or at least not what the state said it was going to be. So this is kind of a contract with the state. So the next thing I'm going to do is bring an ordinance to you, authorizing the mayor to enter into contracts for this project with the state of Connecticut and deep. Okay? So it's their contractor, they bid, it's their, it's their state contract, we pay for it, they give us the interest rate on the bond, et cetera. And today, I came into the office and Abdul was waiting for me, and he says, well, we have to change the, the bond amount. And that's all it is. Unfortunately, we, in doing so, we have to schedule for a second public hearing because we have to notice the amount of the bonds that we're going, that are being requested, and that you are ultimately going to vote on.
Thank you so much. So when you say that the amount was premature, was it just an error in the amount, or he wasn't sure?
No, it was an error. We, I, I had, I have two, two documents, one document, the first one that I received to write the, write up the summary, and the notice for publication said one number, and we had no reason not to, to believe that. And then he received the final number. Unbeknownst to him, the first number wasn't final. And I guess there was more specifications that were added in from deep that the contractor had to consider, and it raised the price.
Right. No, the only reason I ask is because it's a significant amount in that error. So I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I can assure you, it's, it has nothing to do with the engineering department, or any department, public works, or anything in the city hall. It was a surprise, surprise from the state, the price, the price was higher.
I appreciate that. I'd like to open this up to the committee. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? I would like to open this up to the entire council. Anyone on the council have any questions? Councilwoman Callahan?
Hello again.
Hello.
Is there a chance it could go up again? Or is this a final quote?
It, it, it best be.
Because I know that you get quotes, and then you get the final.
Well, now, I, I think it's final because the state is also asking for the ordinance authorizing the mayor's, you authorizing the mayor to enter into the contracts.
Right, right. So maybe it's because the quote was from, I don't know how far back, but probably a little bit back, and things have gone up too, so that could probably allocate to it. But I just wanted to just be sure that they're not going to come back and say, okay, now it's this much.
I sincerely hope not. But like I said, I do also have the communication with respect to the ordinance that they're asking for, so their contracts are ready to be signed.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If that were to happen, we only have so much time until we have to present, present it again, so we're hoping.
Well, I'm hoping as well.
We just need to have the communication, just to make sure that if it were to change, it just has to happen in that amount of time.
Before publication.
Exactly. Any other questions on the council? Thank you so much, Mr. Dorsey. I appreciate it. Seeing there are no more questions, we have to have a public hearing set, so we need to rescind my motion.
Or rescind my second?
I withdraw my first.
Thank you so much. Chairman, I would like to set a public hearing for Monday, September eighth, at six fifty PM.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The time is now eight fifty-six, and your Committee on Finance is now closed.
Thank you very much. Up next is the Committee on Legislative Matters, Acting Chairwoman Milton.
Thank you, Chairman Vargo. The time is now eight fifty-six, and your Legislative Matters Committee is now in session. Present are Councilman Lox, Councilman John Stone, and myself, Councilwoman Milton, acting as chair. Absent is Councilwoman Tucker, and Councilman Vargo is acting chair of the council. We have before us Communication I. from the July twenty-eight agenda, from Mayor Durand Abora, regarding an ordinance amending chapter ninety-seven of the Code of West Haven Fair Rent Commission. I'd like a motion to bring this up for discussion.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Attorney Dorsey, could you come up and address us? Tell us what you think about the comments from the public hearing.
So I received the comments this morning in written form, and the suggestions that were made. I received them mid-morning. I had an ordinance to revise, and things of that nature to get ready for tonight's meeting. I took a look at them, as did the other lawyers in my office, and we both, all three of us agree that some of the comments are certainly worth taking a look at, some of them we don't agree with. Off the top of my head, I mean, I think we comply with the, with the new statute and some of our language that might have been overlooked or misconstrued by learned counsel who addressed you tonight. But that being said, some, some really good suggestions were raised. We would like some time to maybe incorporate some of those suggestions, and that's what public hearings are for, by the way, and, and return to you with another proposed ordinance. Now, in the meantime, we still have a pretty darn good Fair Rent Commission ordinance in place, and the commission is doing some fine work. This ordinance is to improve it, make it better, comply with the new statute, which it does. So I, I think the prudent thing to do, if I received this a week earlier or whatever, maybe I would have some concrete suggestions or changes to, to make right now, but I don't. Any lawyer who says that they could read several pages of a memo that was written by another lawyer, making suggestions to a change of an ordinance, you know, eleven o'clock this morning is, you know, can't be done. So my suggestion would be to hold this and allow us the possibility of amending the amended ordinance, and that would require a second public hearing on the changes made.
Attorney Dorsey, are you suggesting that we set a public hearing for our next meeting, or do you need more time?
No, we can't set up the public hearing until we present you with the changes. There's a first reading, so this, this remains on the agenda. So hopefully, by the next meeting, my crack legal team will, will, will come up with suggestions that were prompted by tonight's presentation.
Okay, so that, that would be the action.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I'd like to open up questions for the committee first. Any questions? For council?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attorney Dorsey, is there anything in the proposed ordinance that authorizes the commission to do that, under the charter or the current ordinance, it is not allowed to do that we need to be concerned about?
In other words, do we, can we, since there's a new enabling statute, do we have to hold activities?
Right. Can, can the commission operate fully and effectively under the new statute?
Yes.
Given the ordinances that are in place now?
Yes.
So there's nothing that's handcuffing them from taking appropriate action?
What, what the commission can't do is violate the Connecticut general statutes. So it's very, you know, there's some discretion for a municipality on how to conduct their own business, for example, quorums, that kind of thing. There's other things that are mandated that have to be followed. So there was a new provision in general statutes with respect to short-term rentals, for example. Our commission, even though it doesn't say it in our ordinance yet, has to follow that statute. So like I said, we have a good workable stat, ordinance, one of the best in the state, in my opinion. We're trying to make it better, but yes, our, our, our commission can continue to operate as, as long as they follow the general statutes.
So the fact is that the landlords and the tenants are still, are still protected by the, by the statute. The commission has to follow the statute. All we could do is just give them some added discretion that is within that statute, but that would be within the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And some clarifying things, like dismissing a complaint. We can dismiss a complaint without a hearing if it, if the commission says it doesn't have jurisdiction over it, right? Someone from Handen files a complaint in West Haven, we don't have jurisdiction over Handen. We don't have a hearing, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Councilwoman McArthur, wait.
Attorney Dorsey, I have a couple of questions. First question is, page three of the proposed ordinance, you have, "The rent during said period shall be paid to the commission to be held in escrow." Is that something that normally happens with Fair Rent Commissions? They hold on to tenants' rents? And if so, where does that go?
Well, escrow means it goes, well, yeah. Escrow means it's an account that's held by a third party, okay? And may or may not earn interest. Okay? Now, I'm not clear, I haven't worked on the, the nitty-gritty of the Fair Rent Commission ordinance, so I'm not clear if that is a statutory requirement or not. I can't answer your question on that. But I can have your, the que, yeah, that question answered very quickly. I actually don't have the, I don't have the answer to that tonight.
Okay. I'd like to know the answer to that.
But I, I do know that Attorney Taylor complied with the statutes, I mean, with the enabling statute, so I'm sure that wasn't just, didn't come out of the ether. But I can answer that question for you promptly, just, just not from the podium.
Okay. The other question I have, under part B., page three, "In making determinations as to whether a rental charge is excessive, the commission shall give due consideration to the following," and then it lists them out, and number three, it says, "the income of the tenant." Why, why would we take into consideration the income of a tenant when rentals are driven by? by market value?
I don't have an opinion on that, but that comes directly from the statute.
Can you send me that statute?
You want a copy of the statute?
Yeah, that one, that specific one.
The enabling statute for the Fair Rent Commission?
For that, for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Any other questions?
Attorney Dorsey, I think that 97.5B, the 12, 13 enumerated conditions for consideration, that, I believe, is all from the enabling statute.
That's correct. That's always my response, yes.
So the state has determined that the commission should consider these 13 enumerated points in rendering its decision. It can apply whatever weight it wants, but these are the points that it can take into consideration in rendering its decision.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to make sure I have, Councilman, you're referring to a copy of the enabling statute and your question with respect to rent and escrow. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'd like to know who's holding on to it.
And whether or not-
And who's in charge of it.
And whether or not it comes from the statute, from the enabling statute. Correct.
Right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Callahan?
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I think maybe, is it fair to say that, you know, maybe we should let them do their due diligence before we start going through every single thing on here until they come back with notes? I'm not really clear if maybe we're jumping the gun a little bit until they get to go through it, and then we look at it and then ask questions?
Well, we, when I say we, I mean my office. The office of Corporation Council went through it thoroughly to make sure it complies with the enabling statute.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you meant previously that you just needed some time to go through all this and going to send it back to us, reworded, and then we would come back with questions or?
Well, the Speaker tonight, I refer to him as learned counsel because he is, and he's kind of an expert in his field, and we'll listen to him. At first blush, there are a few concerns I have with his suggestions. I think they're slightly biased and possibly unnecessary, but there's other things that he suggests wording in the ordinance that I think it clarifies and can be of some value. But if you have other questions on the ordinance that you want answers to before the first reading of the amendment that's coming to you next, that's fine. You can also answer the questions at the next meeting.
So again, like, in what you had said too, you know, we're just, I mean, we have just seen this. I've seen it, but I'd like to really look at it. So I know, that's my whole point. So, you know, maybe we should all just give each other time. And then if we each have questions, we can email you.
Sure. Oh, absolutely. And copy Attorney Taylor, M. Taylor, at westhaven.ct-g.
I have one question.
Yes.
Thank you.
As you're, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Are you done? All right. So you're going to go back and look at Mr. Podolsky, Attorney Podolsky's recommended changes to the ordinance, and you'll make some determination as to what you would or wouldn't accept, and revise the ordinance accordingly.
Right.
We would then be provided with a copy to review for potentially our next meeting.
Right.
I wonder whether you might also give us some kind of annotation as to what changes you made based on your review of his memo and why you didn't accept some of the other changes.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can understand what the rationale was, because obviously, if you're a good attorney, you're going to be very convincing in your presentation as to why something is an important change to make, and we'd like to hear from you why you didn't accept some of the changes that you don't accept when you do revise the ordinance.
Okay. So for clarification, the amended ordinance will come back, similar to the ordinance, the bonding ordinance. So it will come back, changed. It would have to be, it would be a first reading. A public hearing would be set, and then we'd have this conversation again before you vote. Okay.
Chairman Vargo?
Just one, thank you, just one point of clarification, because I think there's just been some discussion of how we got to where we are right now, so I wanted to clarify. Attorney Taylor reviewed the enabling statute and drafted what we have now in consultation with the commission. We saw this at our July meeting, had a discussion with the commissioners and Attorney Taylor. Because we had the public hearing scheduled for today, public got an opportunity to take a look at the ordinance and to chime in on what their thoughts are. The attorney that was here works for Connecticut Legal Services, which represents tenants, among other things, but represents tenants predominantly in landlord-tenant issues. So they're looking at this as a lens, under a lens of, how does this ordinance affect the tenants in West Haven? And that's where he's coming from. I applaud Attorney Dorsey and his staff for being receptive of those comments, but I agree, he needs to have an opportunity to review them in light, because this ordinance is not designed to be swayed towards the tenants, towards landlords. It needs to be neutral, and it just identifies what the commission does and how it does it. So I applaud you for taking the time. You'll put together an amendment, like Chairwoman Melton said, with, you know, the rationale of what you agree with, what you don't agree with, and we'll take it up in two weeks and set it up for a public hearing. Yeah, thank you.
Terrific.
Councilwoman Donovan?
Thank you. How you doing, Paul? All right. The gentleman that spoke, the mayor's student there, and he spoke very elegantly, by the way, he did bring up that concern with the, where it says, "vote of four is needed to change that to majority." Is that a big deal to do, or is that something that we are looking to possibly favor, or?
Um, I don't want to, yeah. That was the suggestion or the feeling of the commission. And Attorney Taylor drafted what he believed was a ordinance that passed muster with the statute. So there are some considerations on that. If you have only four people present, and you're going to tell a landlord he can't charge a certain amount of money, or the rent has to be changed, that's a, you know, significant thing to do. So it's the commission's opinion that if there's only four people there, it should require four votes, similar to this council, needing nine votes, you know?
Well, nine votes with, if we have nine, yeah, but I'm saying if we have the 13, you only need the majority.
You don't need the majority vote, yeah, which would be-
And it raises why I was saying majority, because it kind of goes with what Chairman Vargo was saying, well, kind of keeping it even, keeping it fair for both. So that four votes could favor the landlord or favor, you know?
Or the tenant. That was the commission's rationale for that provision, yeah.
All right.
Right. Yeah. And I don't believe that that's a statutory mandate.
Yeah, yeah.
That it has to be that way, or it has to be what Attorney Podolsky suggested.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Chairman. Councilwoman Donovan. Any other questions for Attorney Dorsey? Any other questions about the ordinance? Point of procedure, since we're not going to schedule a public hearing, I will hold this in committee?
Have your first and your second rescind, and then just hold it in committee.
Okay. So I'd like my first and second to rescind.
Second rescinded. Withdraw my first.
And what?
Request that the matter be held in committee.
Yeah, so we're going to hold this matter in committee. So that concludes the business of the Legislative Matters Committee, and the time is now 9:15.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Vargo.
Up next is Public Lands, Councilperson Donovan.
I like that. It is 2025. You never know.
Go clear, person.
The time is now 9:15. Committee on Public Lands is now in session. Members present, Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Callahan, Councilman John Stone, and myself, acting as chair. Councilman Vargo is the chair of the City Council. We have before us tonight Communication B from Paul Dorsey, Corporation Council, to request that the City Council pass a resolution approving a sidewalk encroachment that will allow for a handicap accessibility ramp to be built at the commercial establishment located at 179 Union Avenue. I'm looking for a motion for favor.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion. Reason why this is being brought to us for everybody's understanding is because the city owns the sidewalks. They want to put a handicap ramp there, and it's encroaching on the city. All we have to do is say yes or no. And at that point, it goes to P&amp;Z, and P&amp;Z at that point determines the height, the width, the length. So we're just okaying them to encroach onto the city property.
Yeah, just a little clarification. So you're essentially correct. The city doesn't own the sidewalk. We have a sidewalk easement. So the landowner, who owns the building where Zuparney's is, owns that sidewalk. In order for them to encroach on that sidewalk, however, they need our permission, because we have a right-of-way by statute and ordinance. So they submitted a plan to the planning department, building department, excuse me, which okayed it, and also determined that it met the requirements of a handicap ramp, which is great. Then engineering reviewed the plan and said that it's visible, clearly visible, has railings, it's conspicuous, it shouldn't be a hazard. So he approved it. It actually doesn't have to go to planning and zoning, because it qualifies as a handicap accessible entrance. So they could even skip that part. And in the resolution that we're passing, and I've been in contact with the owners of the property and their representative, they will agree to make the city of West Haven a name insurer on their insurance policy and identify us for many. So let's, for example, somebody trips over the ramp, it's on the city's right-of-way. They're going to sue the city and say, why do you have this obstruction where I'm supposed to walk? And that's Zuparney's problem, not ours. And we're lost payee on their insurance policy.
So without any questions from the committee? Yes?
Just one. So I know it's hard to say, because we don't have the prints in front of us, but, so if somebody's walking down the street, will they have to go in the street to get around this ramp?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no. It's adjacent to the window of their entrance.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm picturing it, like, here's the sidewalk, and it goes across.
No, 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 no. It's going to be in front of their window, where people would normally walk to get up their stoop to go in.
So wouldn't block traffic walk?
Yeah, they're having, they have difficulty with their stoop as it is now. It's the wrong size, and people trip and fall, and they want to fix that problem. To their credit.
All right, perfect. Thank you all set.
Anybody else? It's open to the council as well. Anybody else have any questions? All right, seeing none. The committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. The time is now 9:19, and your Committee on Public Lands is now closed.
Thank you. We are reconvening the council as a whole. Time is 9:19. On unfinished business, the FY 2526 budget registrar of voters personnel, my understanding, Attorney Dorsey, is that you are waiting for some information from the state, and we are just in a holding pattern at the moment. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. At this time, I'll ask the council clerk to read Communication A into the record.
Communication A from the tax collector regarding overpayment refunds for August 2025 will be filed with tonight's minutes.
Thank you, Stacy. Moving on to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Acbarelli.
Thank you so much, Chairman. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee of Finance met on the 25th day of August 2025 to consider the matter of Communication D regarding an authorization to increase the fiscal year 2025-2026 paving low SIP allocation as previously adopted by the City Council from $100,000 to $441,411.37 per the actual grant received from the state of Connecticut. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved. The City Council of the City of West Haven hereby adopted a budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 anticipating low SIP funds in the amount of $620,000, of which $100,000 was allocated for road patching and paving. Whereas, the actual low SIP grant received from the state of Connecticut in the amount of $961,411.37. Whereas, the City of West Haven desires to utilize the excess grant funds to increase the allocation for road paving and patching for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 from $100,000 to $441,411.37. And whereas, low SIP regulations mandate that the municipality's legislative body must approve any project utilizing low SIP grant funds within a capital improvement plan, and that such approval be documented in certified minutes of the required meeting. Be it resolved that the City Council of West, I'm sorry, that the City of West Haven by and through its finance director is authorized to allocate and obligate additional low SIP funds in the amount of $341,411.37 to project named Road Patching/Paving. And be it further resolved that such funds shall be used in accordance with low SIP entitlement guidelines for road, I'm sorry, patching and paving, there's a typo there, projects that are within the City of West Haven that are ongoing or in planning stage, and I so move.
Thank you. I have a motion regarding a matter of authorizing an increase in the FY 2526 budget for low SIP paving from $100,000 to $441,411.37. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you so much, Chairman. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance met on the 25th day of August 2025 to consider said matter. Communication E regarding budget transfer for Allentown Fire Department in the amount of $3,532 from AFD contingency account to AFD salary account for the contractually mandated raise for the fire marshal beginning fiscal year 2025 to 2026. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved. That the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves transfer of funds from account number 11000010-56010, Unallocated Contingency Fund, Allentown Fire Department, to account number 19500010-51000, Regular Wages, Allentown Fire Department, in the amount of $3,532 for the purpose of funding a contractually mandated merit raise for the fire marshal, and I so move. And that concludes our business after, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. I have a motion to authorize a budget transfer for the Allentown Fire Department in the amount of $3,532 to comply with a contractually mandated merit raise. to comply with a contractually mandated merit raise for the fire marshal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you Chairman, and that concludes the business.
Madam Chair, we need a public hearing and a first read of the amended ordinance.
Yep, no problem, sorry. So for Communication J from the July 28th Agenda from a dual-kit here city engineer regarding a bond ordinance for the planning, design, and construction of Dawson Avenue Pump Station and East Avenue Pump Station in the amount of $32,900,000. A public hearing will be set on Monday, September 8th, 2025 at 6:50 PM.
And unfortunately, I need you to read the summary.
Oh.
For a first read.
Sure. Just give me one second. The ordinance appropriates the maximum amount of $32,900,000 approval in the city's fiscal year 2024 to 2025 capital budget for the costs associated with the planning, design, construction, and issuance up to finance such capital projects in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 109 of the Connecticut General Statutes of new sewer pump stations at Dawson Avenue and East Avenue, and the authorization for the issuance of $32,900,000 bonds to meet that appropriation. The ordinance provides for an 80% loan with a 2% interest rate over 20 years, with payment funds coming from sewer usage charges and the WPCC budget. Application will be made to DEEP for a grant provided by the Clean Water Fund to fund the remaining 20% of the project's costs. The purpose ordinance will authorize the mayor, the Finance Director, and the Treasurer, the Bond Committee, to sell such bonds in a competitive or negotiated offering, authorize bonds to be issued pursuant to the terms of the city's trust indenture, authorize the Bond Committee to issue bond anticipation notes for the short-term financial prior to the issuance of the bonds, authorize the Bond Committee to take all necessary actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, including actions related to the tax-exempt nature of the bonds, the reimbursement of prior city capital indentures, and those needed to satisfy post-issuance disclosure obligations, and authorizes the mayor, the Finance Director, and other duly authorized city officials to apply for grants for those capital budgets, or, sorry, projects.
Thank you. And to confirm, the public hearing is set for September 8th, 2025 at 6:50.
Thank you, and that concludes the business for Finance.
Thank you. Moving on to Legislative Matters, Acting Chairwoman Milton.
Thank you Chairman Vargo. Your Committee on Legislative Matters met this 25th day of August 2025 regarding the matter of Communication I from the July 28th Agenda from Mayor Durand de Boer regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 97 of the Code of West Haven Fair and Rant Commission. Point of procedure, I assume at this point I say the committee is holding this. So, Mr. Chairman Vargo, we are holding this in committee. Do I need to read a summary of it?
We are good.
Okay.
All set? Thank you. And last but not least, Public Lands Chairman Donovan.
Thank you Chairman. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Public Lands met on the 25th day of August 2025 to consider the matter of Communication B to request from Paul Dorsey City Council Corporation Counsel to request that the City Council pass a resolution approving a sidewalk encroachment that will allow for a handicap accessible ramp to be built at the commercial establishment located at 179 Union Avenue. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved. Whereas CAF Realty Associates LLC, the owner of the real property known as 179 Union Avenue, has submitted a plan to the West Haven Planning and Zoning Commission requesting approval for a sidewalk entrance ramp to the commercial establishment on the premises known as Zupardee's Beats, which planned entrance ramp will encroach upon the city of West Haven's public sidewalk right-of-way abutting its property. And whereas, pursuant to Chapter 206 Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of the City of West Haven and Section 7-148 of the Connecticut General Statute, the City of West Haven by and through this legislative body regulates to keep open and safe for public use and travel and free from encroachment or obstruction in the streets, sidewalks, public places within the city limits. And whereas, CAF Realty Associates LLC has sufficiently shown through its plan, which plan was studied, reviewed, and approved by the required city officials and departments, that such ramp will not impede normal public pedestrian travel or otherwise affect normal use of the city sidewalk. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the plan as presented to this council by CAF Realty Associates LLC to install an entrance ramp to the commercial establishment on the premises known as Zupardee's Pizza located at 179 Union Avenue, West Haven, Connecticut, encroaching upon the city's public sidewalk right-of-way upon following terms and conditions. One, it shall be the absolute responsibility of CAF Realty Associates LLC and any future owners of interest in such property to maintain the entrance ramp in good condition and within compliance with all applicable building code provisions. Two, CAF Realty Associates LLC shall be responsible for repairing the surrounding sidewalk to its current condition after constructing the ramp. Three, CAF Realty Associates LLC should, shall indemnify the City of West Haven from any and all claims for damages arising from the use or placement of the ramp, including but not limited to claims of personal injury and loss of any kind. Four, CAF Realty Associates LLC and its successors in interest to the property and ramp shall maintain adequate insurance for such claims for damages arising from the use of placement of the ramp, and shall have listed on such policy the City of West Haven as named insured and loss payee for such claims. And I so move.
Thank you. I have a motion regarding a matter of approving a sidewalk encroachment for the construction of a handicap ramp at Zupardee's. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All set Chairman?
I'm all set, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to council liaison reports, are there any reports? Councilman Johnstone?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. As promised, as I did last meeting, you all have received from me previous to this meeting today, and I also printed out one for everybody in that email. I included the City Council, the mayor, and Ricky Sprier. This is an update from Captain Romano about how we are supposed to inform our constituents and how the residents are supposed to handle the reporting of the ordinance that we passed in terms of the handbells. A new email has been created. It is W as in for West Haven, whblight@whpd.com. The process will be as follows. The Public Works Blight and the Police Department all met, and they came up with this plan. This is not a permanent plan. This is the hybrid that is being conducted. A bi-weekly meeting will take place, and from that bi-weekly meeting, they will go over all of the emails submitted, whether it was from one of us, the mayor, anybody in staff, or a resident. From that email list, they will conduct their search and go to these sites. So what are you supposed to include in that email? You are to include a picture, if possible, and the exact location or locations that you are complaining about. From there, the resource officer and the blight officer will then approach the individual, whether it's a property that is clearly posted there or if it is a business. So for example, the mayor loves paving, well, so do the driveway companies, and they're popping up this time of year as well. The discretion of what ticket and how much to be issued will be used by the resource officer and the blight officer. Some will get warnings, others will not, depending on the severity of the situation. Once again, this is the hybrid that is being tried this fall. If you have any questions, the council is to submit them to Captain Romano themselves. And the last update I have Chairman, in terms of the ordinance we also passed in regards to the soliciting, not only has it been successful, we've actually already banned one company. So they will not be allowed any permit in the next year. So once again, it is very important that if you see something, you say something. And if people are knocking or ringing your doorbell, and they do not have any type of identification on them, you are to report them as well. Thank you Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sure.
Is there any way to know whether the handbill is permitted or not before you report it? It might be permitted. Is there any way to know that if they're permitted or not?
No, so you're still to report them because remember, the ordinance does state if it's public property, like a pole, it's not supposed to be there.
Unless they have a permit.
Correct, and that permit will be, they'll run it through their system.
But you have to report it even though it might have a permit?
I would report it regardless because
Thank you.
the biggest thing with this is the educational part of it.
All set? Any other liaison reports? Councilwoman Callahan?
Yes, I do, but I think maybe just in reference to what you're thinking, I don't think it's what, tax sales and dogs. It's more of the companies. Okay, I wasn't sure, because I know that we kind of... Oh, tax sales too? Oh. Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, so this isn't just the companies, this is homeowners as well. So the problem, the reason why we as a council and the mayor passed this ordinance was because what's happened over time, it becomes not only unsightly, but a pollution and littering problem as well. Because we all know every time it rains, sometime after, whenever it does decide to rain lately, it falls off, it blows around, the wind takes it, it ends up in a gutter, someone's yard, and it just looks trashy. So remember, we passed the ordinance, it's $50 per offense, if I remember correctly, for a homeowner, it is $200 per offense for the actual business. But once again, those amounts are being used at the discretion of the two officers handling the complaint.
Okay, thanks. But I was going to just say a liaison report. We did have a gentleman in our neighborhood, and I have to say the police department was, they were there within minutes. I heard this all secondhand, but it was a tall gentleman, and he told some neighbors he was with the gas company, he told some neighbors he was with roofing, and he told some neighbors he was with UI. So it was definitely, and he asked some neighbors to go in their backyards. So I, when it was brought to my attention, I think that what everybody really needs to be very diligent about, is diligent about, is ask what company they're from before you even ask for ID. Just to, I mean, ask the company, approve for the company because this particular guy, and they didn't catch him, which three people got him on a ring, it's clear as day, but they didn't catch the guy. So I think it's a great plan. I've noticed it has come down substantially, at least in our neighborhood, but and I don't know if this was this individual or not, but just to be diligent, there are a lot of houses popping up for sale, and one of the ones that is for sale, obviously, they know is vacant. It was a rehab fix-and-flip, gorgeous home now, and somebody broke in the back and stole all the copper piping. And again, the police were called, they got there, but they never got the guy. So it's just something to be aware of as well, for safety purposes. But other than that, they did a great job. And Allentown Fire Department, I think I might have said this, I don't remember, it's been a month, but we had the fire on 34. They were there, three trucks, it could have been a lot worse, that whole reservoir could have went up. They really did a fantastic job. I took pictures, I sent them to the chief, I posted it because I happen to be walking the dog, but my God, they were there, and it's been so dry. So really, it's just a serious situation with no rain at all for like a month. So they did a fantastic job as well. So thank you, Allentown Fire Department. That's it.
Thank you. I am the liaison to the Fair Rant Commission, so I just wanted to say and recognize the hard work that the commission put in the proposed ordinance, the hard work that Corporation Counsel's Office put into that. Again, I applaud you for taking into consideration what somebody else has put in front of you, and I know that we'll get a top-notch ordinance at the next meeting. I also had the opportunity to witness and be involved in one of their hearings, and I have to applaud the professionalism in the way that they conduct themselves and how thorough they are. Mayor did a great job making those appointments. So they're doing a great job. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Any new business? Councilwoman Garthwait?
I want to take the opportunity to thank Rich Hebert, who is our treasurer for Sandy Point Neighborhood Association, and also Bonnie, who is our secretary. These two board members made it possible so that we could have one neighbor's trash is another neighbor's treasure. It was a pretty good event, and it was a lot of great feedback. We were one shy of our goal, one participating household. In case anybody didn't notice, we actually had some really nice professional signs made. There were no handmade signs, they were posted on properties of each participating homeowner. Next year, I plan to double it. So get ready guys, we're going to double our signs again. Also, I want to say we are having our cleanup on the 13th from 9 to 11? 10 to 12, 10 to 12. It will be in conjunction with DEEP and also Audubon, they'll be on site to help us clean up some of the areas that are a little messed up from the litter that came in. So we'll be there, if anybody wants to join us. Hope you'll come out and support our efforts. That's it. Oh, Mayor, can I ask you for an update on the Havens?
Yes, so the Simon Group was down about a month ago and evaluating the price for the acreage. And I believe they have modified their price, which is a good thing for us because then hopefully there'll be more interested developers that can afford the parcel. No, no, there's interest, I just think it's too pricey. We do have a study going on right now along the bulkhead regarding the depth of the water, just on a parallel track because we want to know what the opportunity is for that. But as we get developers, we'll let you know, we'll let everybody know. Thank you. You're welcome.
All set Councilwoman Garthwait? All set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I just want to comment briefly, I think, on what Councilwoman Heffernan brought up about what Councilman Johnson was talking about, about the signage and the postings. I think the point is that what the residents could do is say something, see something, say something, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be a fine. That's up to, you know, somebody else to enforce that. So if a resident thinks that there's some, you know, something that's inappropriate, then they could just say something, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's going to lead to a fine. Any other new business?
Thank you for reminding me, we're going to have the cleanup on Marginal Drive first Saturday of the month, 9 o'clock, if anybody's interested. I know there's a lot of people on Facebook that always chime in on Marginal Drive, so we welcome you with open arms, right, to join us. And again, you guys do a fantastic job with that as well. And again, thank you with the mayor and Ricky Fontana in New Haven. We were able to get that camera up live in action. It really just deterred a lot of dumping, so thank you. It was really amazing. I know we can't keep it, and it has to go around the city, but, you know, just to even start that, I think you've noticed it too down there, so thanks. But if anybody wants to join us on the Saturday, we'll see you then, thanks.
Councilwoman Heffernan?
Sorry, besides the signage, I do have an issue, but this Saturday here at City Hall, there is a Surfside Veterans fundraiser car show from noon to 6:00, and that's right here in our park, in our community parking lot. So if anyone has any availability on Saturday...
Is the fire truck going to make it?
I think, I think, I think it's going to be there. And I have a bell ringer. But the other thing is, maybe if someone gets a permit, they can have their sign say permitted on it so that everyone will know that it's permitted, and therefore they don't have to, people are not abusing, or not abusing, but just taking up time that is not necessary for the blight and police. Thank you.
Any other new business from the council? Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you again to the council for all the work you do. Just a couple of notes. Mally, Kathy wrote to me, we're going to turn off the parking at Sandy Point for the cleanup so that you could have out-of-towners. I think she said 8 to 1, so we'll cover it to 8 to 1. Speaking of the Heberts, the pump station, the flood hardening wall, supposedly it's still on track according to FEMA. You know, we cross our fingers because, you know, we were worried about the funding that was in jeopardy for the flood hardening wall around the plant and Bloom Street. So we continue to get the green light, so we continue to work on it until they tell us not to. So we'll keep you posted on that. Yes, so the lock cops, we have three lock cops. One is at Marginal Drive, one is at Spring Street, are two of our biggest pain points, right, because they're hidden. We did finally issue a $500 fine to somebody, so we are catching people with that camera, but mostly they're not coming back, which is really great. Also, we haven't talked since the last, the last meeting, and we had a lot of summer activities. So we had our festival, which was really successful. Our concert series came to a close. We have one more acoustic Sunday, September 7. On the horizon is Special Olympics, which is the 13th and the 14th. We're looking for volunteers. I think it's a great opportunity for anybody who's listening, you know, if you have a teenager, maybe a high school student, if you want to, you know, demonstrate volunteering for, you know, a great opportunity to show our athletes, a great event. We were able to work with Stop &amp; Shop, who's going to be a large donor. They're going to donate, they're going to be the sponsor for $3,500. So we're very appreciative to Stop &amp; Shop for that. Finally, good news, because we haven't met since we had this announcement, but we were awarded through the Bonding Commission $2.4 million for an upgrade around Savinrock School and around Washington School. So it's a neighborhood safety upgrade. So that includes sidewalks, and yes, paving, and fencing, and bright crosswalks, and more signage. So, you know, and we, Savinrock is one of the most walkable communities, you know, so we look at, we look at pedestrian, we work with our police department, the traffic division, to look at where there's pedestrian, the most pedestrian issues, and there are some around Savinrock. And then Washington School, we spent all that funding on a brand-new school, but that funding doesn't come with upgrading the streets around it. So $2.4 million. And that kind of goes hand in hand with the paving conversation, because our last grant we got was for a VA neighborhood upgrade, and that was for paving and sidewalks on Eli and Boylston and King and Overlook and Crest. And now we're looking at, between Campbell and First for Dana. So a lot of these streets that haven't been paved, using the bonding neighborhood upgrade is an opportunity for us. So that's like an additional 15 streets that we're going to be able to pave. We got, and Gary and I actually went and talked to the residents on Boylston and Eli because they're already done with all their sidewalks and very, very happy. They haven't had an upgrade in 25 years. So we thank the governor for that and our state representatives, and I believe the governor will be coming down for, to announce it, even though I just announced it. But he could still come down. Thanks.
Thank you. I and a number of the council members attended the Washington School grand opening. It is absolutely gorgeous. Well done to everybody. With that, on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to wish all of the returning students a very happy and safe school year. On behalf of all parents everywhere, thank God. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.